Welcome back to the Board of Supervise meeting. I hope everyone had a good lunch. We are on to Human Resources and Risk Management. We're not doing presentations. Are there any questions regarding this or changes to the CIO's recommendations? Supervisor Mills?
Got this thing to drag over here. A question regarding the, on page 265, the county reimbursement 4751 of $96,000. We hadn't done that last year. Was there? I was trying to look for it in the narrative as to what that was all about.
What's the number?
267?
Two forty, on 265.
265.
Forty-seven fifty-one county reimbursement. Ninety-six thousand, two twenty. There was nothing there last year. And I don't see anything in the narrative to explain it.
And so that one right there is for Karen's salary. So we had added the position for the Human Resources Analyst in HHSA. And so this position is managing all of the investigations. And she's also assisting in the merit systems, Procter testing, all of those type of things for Health and Human Services. And so that's for the reimbursement of her salary.
I have her staff number then as oh-four thirteen, oh-four dash thirteen analyst.
And I don't know it off the top of my head that I can...
That one lists out at fifty-five thousand, four-seventy. So there's quite a difference between that and the number here. No, that's just salary only.
Okay, but this, that would be fully loaded.
The all-in would be the ninety, ninety-six thousand.
All-in, yeah.
Fifty-five goes up to ninety-six, fully weighted?
That would be fully weighted.
Okay.
And I believe that also includes her cellphone and...
Pretty much anything else?
Right.
Total of HHSA?
For her, exactly. That's her full cost to us.
The other thing that seemed like a little bit of an anomaly was on the next page of 266 has to do with services and supplies. And seventeen eighteen is a hundred and two thousand. This year to date is a hundred and eighteen thousand, and we're budgeting for two-hundred-and-twelve. That's basically a doubling in two budget cycles for services and supplies. Does it have something to do with the phones and some other things that might be coming up?
I apologize. What line item was that again?
This would be the total for services and supplies on page 266. I'm not talking into the mic, my bad.
So he's looking at the overall rollout?
Correct.
Not any particular line item?
Okay, for the... So 2018, our final budget was one-ninety-one. And then for nineteen twenty is two thousand and twelve. And so it's not quite doubled.
But in your budget for the previous year was a hundred and two.
For seventeen eighteen. For seven, right.
That's where I see the doubling. In two budget cycles, we've doubled that.
And so we have also added for, we've had changes in computers, change out in computers. We've had, we've had to add for training and...
Employment physicals is another one?
Right. So there's just been an increase in employee count over the past two years, which causes an increase to my, to my department.
Okay. Your final budget on page 268 was, for last year was sixteen, a million six. You're requesting a million nine. So that accommodates or accounts for what we just talked about, pretty much?
Yes, and then also...
Along with the additional department?
Right.
The analyst? Okay. That's all I have to...
And per slump sum and natural salary progression. All of the other discussion we've had about other departments.
And I have that right here. So, okay.
So now, next year, half my staff will be at E Step, so...
Are there other questions or is everybody okay with the, with the CIO's recommended budget? Not seeing any objection. We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to section Information Technology. Jeff is coming back for the building department.
Yes.
Okay. Let's get going. We have Information Technology Communications. Are there any questions for, for the department head or are changes to the CIO's recommended budget?
Stan's got me confused.
It is confusing.
Page 271, under fifty-four twenty-two, you increase from twelve, of twelve point six K from two-hundred-and-thirty-five K to thirty-eight point one K. Is there, am I missing something? That's on page 271. At the bottom, under Training. This is in the narrative, Stan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
CIO Alta, do you see that?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was trying to make sure we had it.
Sure.
I apologize.
On page 271, under fifty-four twenty-two, Training, those numbers don't even begin to add up. Is there a decimal point missing?
Training...
Should it be two, two, twenty-three point five K instead of two-hundred-and-thirty-five K?
For fifty-four twenty-two?
Yes.
I've got that the, in my, in my narrative, I've got that we've got thirty-nine point three total, right? And, and what I had listed in the narrative...
Yeah, that's what it is. Then we must be missing a decimal point.
What I had listed, the narrative, was some of the key areas.
I think we found it. There's a decimal point missing.
You're, you're, on fifty-four twenty-two, in the parentheses, it says two-hundred-and-thirty-five K.
Got it.
It should be twenty-three point five.
Yes, 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 yes.
Twelve point six equals thirty-eight point one.
This isn't in the narrative.
It doesn't, though. It would make thirty-six point one.
Correct in the spreadsheets?
It would be thirty...
It would be thirty-eight one.
Is the number straight in the totals?
No.
No.
Even at that, they're still not...
Twelve point six plus twelve, twenty-three point five is a total of thirty-six point one and...
Not thirty-eight point one.
Not thirty-eight one. Right. That's all.
Okay.
Stan's sneaking two grand.
Not at all.
In the narrative or in the schedule?
In the narrative.
In the narrative.
And we also, I see the same thing under, on page 272, under fifty-four ninety-nine, Minor Equipment. It says other increase of thirteen point three K from thirteen point seven K to twenty point two K. That doesn't add up either, because that would take us to thirty point. Not twenty.
Takes us to twenty-seven.
That'd be twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, yeah.
Narrative, schedule nine, straight, all right?
So for, sorry, for fifty-four twenty-two and Information Technology, so the training line requested was thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-four. What's being recommended is thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-four. That's on page 276. And, I'm sorry, was it five-four nine-eight or five-four nine-nine that we were...
Five-four nine-nine.
Five-four nine-nine. What's being requested is twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty. And what's being recommended is seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty.
So are there any changes that you guys want to see in that?
It's not adding up for me, but that's all right. I would accept, I would accept the CIO's recommendation here, just without looking at the narrative.
Okay.
Because that narrative's confusing.
Numbers that would count?
Yeah. I would agree with his number.
Is there anybody, Supervisor Toffnell, you have a question?
We have the sheet that he's recommended, CIO's recommended, that those numbers aren't reflected in this budget.
So if you look down, this is...
There were a couple of changes recommended by the CIO that did not get worked back into the narrative. So the narrative had what the original request was. I believe that there were only two changes that the CIO made that I'm okay with. I'm not going to argue about those.
So the...
That were not reflected in the final narrative. Those were in those two areas that we just talked about.
The reimbursement for the position that's going to be housed in IT, but is essentially for the Sheriff's Department is in fifty-seven fifty-six, which is at the bottom of page 276. And that's of revenue coming from the Sheriff's Department for that position.
Thank you.
Thank you for clearing that up.
And that particular position, they have budgeted for a full year. The position that we're planning on bringing in, we've got included in the budget for ten months. It, it will likely not be for a full ten months by the time we recruit, background check onboard. So we will not use the full amount of the revenue from the Sheriff's Office.
So is there any, I gotta raise questions first before I ask if everybody wants to approve the CIO's recommendations? Is everybody okay with the CIO's recommendations?
Yeah. Now that I see the numbers where it's added, it works out, so, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Everybody good? Good? Okay. Great, Stan. They're good. Thank you. Thank you. I know we're kind of upsetting the flow, but do you guys want to go back to building or do you want to keep moving forward?
Let's go to building.
Hey, Jeff, you're up. Okay, stand by, Jeff. We're gonna go through questions and then we will...
Okay. I brought a lot of paper. Hopefully just one or two questions, right?
Well, we've got in front of us, so we'll try not to go through presentations again.
I don't have anything marked on mine.
So, questions or are you guys, Supervisor Mills?
On forty-seven, on page one-twenty-six, forty-seven twenty-one, transferred from designated fund, you had requested three-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, and the CIO's recommending eighty-nine thousand? That's a substantial shift.
Which one is that, Dennis?
Line item forty-seven twenty-one, transfer from designated fund.
Ah, I got that one too.
I just, my question is why the difference? That's substantial.
Yes, the, some of that is reflective of track it, which we're, and I'll have you help me with this as we go along, because we had some adjustments to make. Track it is a moving target, so we're, we know we have some anticipated costs that could come out of the designated fund. The other is the Fire Marshal position and a department analyst that is a position that's been open but not filled.
And you're recommending the department analyst be shared with another department?
No, that would be with just a building department analyst.
So there's no, oh, sorry. No net general fund contribution here. This is a good example of a budget that when we get to the fiscal year end and we actually see where the fund balance is for the Special Revenue Fund and this budget unit that is related to it. And depending on whether any additional changes are requested in anticipation of final, that designated fund transfer might change. Otherwise, this is, budget unit does not require a general fund contribution.
Okay. And on the next page, on one-twenty-seven, the fifty-eight oh-one, Salary Savings, you're showing eighty-nine thousand, two twenty-four in salary savings? You're one of the few departments that actually listed that?
Yes, one of those positions was a Plans Examiner Engineer. And that is, has, that's a position that hasn't been filled, and it's a salary savings because it's a position that has been open. That's a pretty good size.
Big chunk.
Price tag on that one.
But you're, you're making it up with the cost of outside services?
What we want to do is try to get away from the outside, outsourcing as best we can by adding that expertise to the building department. That's where the Fire Planner position comes in. And we also have our CASP Specialist in the county to help us on those plan reviews and inspections as well. So we believe that we can actually save our department expense by having as much of this done in-house as we can.
I'm gonna move on to Code Compliance. With the caseload that's currently in that department, you had recommended or requested a hundred and fifty thousand, and the CIO is recommending a hundred. That's, that's a pretty substantial difference, too. Is that gonna affect your caseloads and the way you handle them?
Well, if we get, if we start coming up short, we're gonna have, we're, I hope that it doesn't reflect on the personnel that we have. The, I can read you some information on that.
Hang on, hang on.
I'm sorry. Is that forty-seven thirty-five?
No, we're, I'm on...
That is one thirty.
Page one thirty, and it would be fifty-three sixteen nuisance abatement expense.
What is the difference between that and forty-seven thirty-five? Nuisance abatement.
Where are you at, on what page are you on?
One twenty-nine.
I believe the difference is the forty-seven thirty-five is revenue that's actually come, come in, I believe. And then the other one's what the projected expenses are gonna be. That could be wrong.
That's a good point.
Those numbers would be the same. So if you, yeah, so any expenditure you would increase down below, the offsetting revenue would come from up above. The caveat being, that's what actually happens.
That people actually pay right when...
But that's the idea.
Right.
So, so I guess, come on.
Go ahead.
I want to answer for you. Al, you want to speak, or...
No, that covers it. If there's not an associated revenue, we can't just add to the department request.
We, you had recommended, though, charges for services on page one-twenty-nine at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And yet the expense itself is a hundred thousand on the next page. In fifty-three sixteen on the next page.
So actually, though, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe those charges, those are specific to the nuisance abatement expense for a hundred thousand as opposed to the, so related to forty-seven thirty-five as opposed to forty-six seventy-nine?
Yeah, that does sound familiar on the...
The one twenty-five is the total of forty-six seventy-nine and forty-seven thirty-five, where fifty-three sixteen only aligns with forty-seven thirty-five. One's revenue, one's associated expense, where the one twenty-five member has revenue in nuisance abatement and charges for services.
So by the time we get down to the bottom of that line, that services and supplies, we have a fifty thousand, again, a fifty thousand dollar difference between what the department is asking for and what you're recommending as CIO?
And, and that difference, all fifty thousand of it is in fifty-three sixteen.
In fifty-three sixteen.
Which reflects over to...
Ten requests, column one, column five.
Can you live with that?
I'll go with the recommendation. But I can tell you that I could, I have some, some information that I could read to you about Code Compliance, and I think it would be a good timely moment to go through that if you'd like to hear it. This came from Code Compliance. Sabrina put this together for me. And currently, we have opened three-hundred-and-seventy-five cases. Additionally, each officer has approximately ten or more complaints at any given time waiting to be investigated and made into cases. So the cannabis citations for eighteen nineteen, thirty-seven citations, ten courtesy notifications. Very few complaints are coming in regarding cannabis and abandoned grow sites. Compliance with the ban to maintain good standing with the county in anticipation of the new regulatory program. So illicit grows have moved indoors, and they're more difficult to detect at this point in time. Updated aerial imagery came late in 2018. And then the next bullet is two-two-eight, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight citations issued in 2017 caused a deterrent as an effect. Outdoor grows delayed this year because of the late rains. So currently, Code Compliance is extremely busy with indoor conversions. We are called out to practically every cannabis eradication the Sheriff's Office performs across the county. There are tremendous amount of code violations at each one of these sites, especially at the illegal indoor grows. These are very time-consuming, complex, and they're, they take a lot of time. In addition to cannabis zoning violations, junk and debris cases, et cetera, we get nearly, we get nearly daily complaints from the building department regarding expired building permits or unpermitted building, not to mention the backlog of as-built. With current staffing level, we are making a lot of progress with backlog of complaints, but cases can take some time to completely resolve. Code Compliance has also been helping to act as an enforcement arm for public works and environmental management. We have budgeted one-hundred thousand dollars for nuisance abatement in nineteen twenty to use for abatements. We have several abatements in the, in the queue that are possibly, and there are possibly, we may need to come back to the board later in the year to request more funds depending on those costs. In eighteen nineteen, just three abatements cost over forty grand. So we would like, we'd also like to use some of that money for nuisance abatement to procure some helicopter flights.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Jeff, you didn't, you are responsible for last year's budget. But at that budget time, we had a long discussion about Code Compliance, and a series of numbers were given to us about what marks were gonna be made. How many abatements, how many citations, and how much revenue? Can you tell me based upon that, how we did?
Well, I think that would be, I don't know what the expectation was of the...
It was very, very high and ambitious, and the conversation was that they were gonna be able to float on their own bottom following all these abatements and fines that were gonna come out. And I'm looking at these numbers, and it doesn't look anywhere close to what we were promised. Because we have, we put a lot of general fund money into seeding this project with the idea that it would seed, and then it would begin to generate, and I'm not seeing it.
Well, I can't, I don't have anything in front of me to pinpoint any of that for any degree of accuracy. I don't know what the expectations were back when they presented you with that.
Supervisor Mills has probably got the report in his trunk of his car. And they laid it out, they laid it out in very clear numbers, how many abatements each person was gonna do and what the revenues were gonna be. And I'd be surprised if we were a fraction of what we promised.
I can get it to you, and I agree. In fact, on this one, you know, we're, we're looking at taking a half million dollars from general fund.
And that's about exactly what we were asked for last year, and we were promised, we were promised something that hasn't been delivered.
Well, in the four and a half months I've been here, whatever...
And you're not responsible at all?
No, I would like to say that the work is out there, that's for sure. Whether it lived up to whatever the expectations are, I, I don't know what those were or what that was based on. But the current staffing is essential at this point in time. And in Code Compliance, we have one empty position that we haven't asked to fill. There's quite a volume of work that comes into Code Compliance that some of, some of the abatements were actually voluntary, so that you wouldn't have seen those necessarily as coming to the board as an abatement. But there were voluntary abatements, and that may be in, in some of this here that was provided to me.
Ten voluntary abatements.
Last year.
I think there was what, three hundred? We were supposed to...
Three, three hundred. I was at the meeting during the budget hearing last year, or prior to the budget meeting when Code Compliance was in, apparently on the other side of the dais. The, the number I do recall was three hundred. The, and the numbers you just gave us for the eighteen nineteen year were, or basically the eighteen, two thousand and eighteen was thirty-seven done through, by Code Compliance and ten, ten voluntary.
And then there was...
A lot less than three hundred.
A following two-hundred and twen, this was, I think this contributes to this number is two-hundred-and-twenty-eight citations issued in twenty-seven, two-seventeen, which the, was the year prior to that. So maybe that was the anticipated number for the year following.
Well, I mean, my point is that, you know, we, we seeded a half million dollars to this program with anticipation that certain things were gonna happen. And, you know, you don't have the information, and Sabrina's not here to defend it, so it puts us in a difficult situation.
I understand, and I would...
You put another good money after bad.
I, I would like to think that we could probably get more information that would, that's not available to us today to try and answer that question, if possible, to explore this a little deeper.
Supervisor Mills, I was hoping to jump in. That's quite all right. I think it's appropriate to have the conversation. So again, I'm not so certain that we won't be cutting off our nose a little bit if we go down to a hundred thousand from the requested one-fifty on nuisance abatement expense, simply because of the increased workload that the Sheriff's Department is experiencing right now, which you are sharing in the, you're sharing in the fund.
Absolutely.
So I would like the board to take a look, and look at this possibly at final or at mid-year. If it's a case that they're not willing to, the board is not willing to look at changing the CIO's recommended at this point, but maybe we have a study session with the code enforcement?
I think that would be a fair thing to do, yes.
To vet out the numbers, show us what, what the accomplishments have been, what has been, what have been the true costs, and what has been our cost recovery up to this point, or what is in the queue from liens or other methods of cost recovery. And then at that point, then we can make a better decision to termination, get all the facts in front of us, because right now, this is just a number.
Yeah, precisely. And I think if we are looking for something that is focusing on, on something in particular, with those, focus on that, and we could produce some sort of reporting that could hopefully answer these questions and be a better explanation than what I'm struggling with at the moment.
Do you have a level-three vest?
What's that?
Do you have a level-three vest?
I don't need one. I got an office.
There's somebody behind, there's somebody behind you.
She's coming to my rescue again.
So just in, in looking at the numbers that you have in front of you, the recovery of costs to date has been about ninety-one thousand dollars. So that forty-seven thirty-five that you see year-to-date for eighteen nineteen, as of the time that the reports were put together, was ninety-one thousand. There, there are a handful of liens that are in the queue, but I will go back to what I said when the whole conversation happened about beefing up Code Compliance. I think that what you had been sold at the time was that it would, for the most part, be full cost recoup. And that was never gonna be the case. My husband always says he doesn't, you know, he doesn't want to crush people's dreams, but the reality is, I did to some degree kind of crush that dream, because what I said was, it's, it's a very lengthy process once you get to the fiscal, physical abatement to actually put that lien package together. It's gotta go before the board. Then you, you're generally gonna have a contractor do the work to do the physical abatement if it's not self-abated. We can't lien for administrative fines. We can only do physical, actual costs, direct administrative charges, and actual abatement costs. Once it goes on the tax lien, then we would apportion it out. It would be a teetered program. I warned the board, if you guys approve a bunch of stuff to go through the property tax system, and there is a high delinquency rate, I'm going to be back here with the tax collector to have it ripped out of the teeter program, because we can't afford high delinquencies. collector to have it ripped out of the teeter program, cause we can't afford high delinquencies against the teeter program. So no matter which way you sliced it or diced it, this was not going to be a full recoup. And so really the board is either going to have to acknowledge that there's a big chunk of code compliance, which is just part of public safety. And a portion can be recouped through the lien process and through judgments, but it's not going to be a lot.
You said that you were basically in front of the board in April of 2016 and that's what you said at that time, that the cost recovery was going to be an issue. We're still seeing that, but I think that we need to fully understand to what level.
I, I think you need to, to understand to what level and I think you need to set the priorities for, for what you want to see the program do going long-term because in essence you're footing the bill. So you're going to take discretionary dollars, you're going to fund this program and you guys are going to have to decide to what extent you want to have priorities. So just like, and I think I said the same thing back in April of 2016, you know, they're, they're not going to be able to get to everything, just like they've never been able to get to everything. The last time Jeff was here before he retired the first time, I think he came forward and said there was something like 1,200 code compliance cases countywide and that was pre-cannabis, right? There was no way we were ever going to get to all those, so you kind of have to pick which are the most egregious health and safety issues and so that's what they're still struggling with. But given the amount of funding that the general fund is contributing, I think that that does need to be a discussion and kind of a priority-based direction.
I'd be, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd be, I understand the finance and the time it takes and it'd be a lot easier to swallow that investment if we were hitting the numbers and we just couldn't collect the money because of deadbeats or whatever reason. But it doesn't appear to me we're hitting the numbers that we were promised. Sold a bill of goods may be the correct expression.
I, I-
Supervisor Stover?
I would also like to go over, it's, we, we have, you know, actually year-to-date for 1819 on collection of $91,979 and then-
What'd they do on it?
129. And then on 130, on what their expense was year-to-date for 1819, $52,000. So what I'm assuming is we're getting some back from prior years on, on nuisance issues that were taken care of before.
Correct.
And part of the information missing here is 1718 and prior years, which would be pertinent in us making a decision on how this is being successful. Cause I agree with you, there could be five years till realization on recouping those expenses, because that's how long it takes for people not to pay their thing before we can actually auction something off.
Correct.
Thank you, Rebecca.
One last point, and this is something I'm going to harp on until the cows come home, is that I'd like to see a line item in here under employees regarding blood panels for your staff.
Oh yes, that's, I think that's critical, you bet.
So I'm just asking that, that that be put in here as a line item. I know it's in the sheriff's department and there's a current contract, maybe we can piggyback on that contract to, to get that done, but with, the point is, is that your, your people are right there beside the sheriff's officers on those cases. And I would certainly hate to face a workman's comp claim in the future because we didn't get our people protected.
Well, and currently we have no baseline on them.
Correct.
So without a baseline, it's a, we need to establish that so we can see what, the level of risk is, it's overwhelming. We learned this Thursday at the workshop, that the types of chemicals and other unknowns that are out there are really very dangerous.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to call you the former assistant Murphy's fire chief so that you fully, everybody fully understands that you understand the hazmat side of this thing. This is not a new, new thing for you. It's not a new thing for me.
Correct.
And, you know, if we want to make a lawyer cringe, let's just not do this.
Well, I highly recommend that we do those, those scans to see where, what the health is, you know, get a baseline established. Back to code compliance, we also have been working on various ways to cover cost recovery because code compliance's fee study is probably more important now than it has ever been, along with the, some things that would help lessen the cost on the general fund and do some things that would be brought forward for approval to help cost recovery that has not been done before. So that's in the works.
And we still have a deficiency on AVA.
Yes. AVA has, is, has some, we're, we're working on the absence of our hauler, so we're, we're trying to get that remedied as we, as fairly recently we talked about that.
Right.
Supervisor Stover?
Yeah, I, I want to be fair to Jeff and I want to be fair when we get to the sheriff's budget. And to speak of Megan, two board members weren't here last year. We agreed because some of these code compliance officers were hired for the urgency ordinance, along with some sheriff's deputies. And we agreed to go forward and fund them because they, because they slipped through the cracks and they became permanent employees instead of being separated like Ethan was. So, so we agreed instead of laying them off and going through that process of bumping and so forth, that we would fund that. And part of it was that they would, they would eradicate and be self-supporting on it. Again, when I go fishing, if the fish aren't biting, they're not biting. I can't say I'm going to bring home dinner and then I'd have to go by the market and buy some fish and say, look what I caught. From what I'm hearing from them, they, the growers that were openly during urgency ordinance, that they, they could go out during those prior years that were growing out there, they could bust more or less easier. Now they're, they're growing indoors, they're, they're being more secretive in what they're doing and they're getting by on some things, so it's being more difficult. So I can understand that versus what was said, it was based on what you'd done the prior year and it could be possibly that they were just going to continue in your face during the ban and it didn't happen. But again, we also gave the sheriff's office a million dollars for eradication last year. And when we get to the budget here, this is part of the strains that are on the budget that he is dealing with that were from prior years that had to do with the urgency ordinance. So to be fair to everybody going, concerned, going forward, I, I understand in trying to meet those expectations and what's happening. And this was more than, than you had when you retired as far as code compliance officers in your office. I think at that time you only had two or three.
Correct, yeah.
Now you're like six, seven, whatever it is.
Five, six.
Five, but you have one, you have six and one vacant.
Yeah, our staff is adequate at the moment.
Yeah.
At least for what we're dealing with, yeah.
So now, now because of what we did last year, we're dealing with it this year and that's what you're seeing with our budget straining and the, and the funds disappearing.
You're absolutely right, Gary. We had a long conversation about that with both sheriff and us. Absolutely correct. And, you know, same thing with county council's office and these things slowly become permanent. And I don't think that was the original intent.
Well, I'd like to add something that may have not been known, at least until recently, from what I've been observing is the fact that some of these cases that were cited by code compliance as long as even two years ago, we're still dealing with those things. They haven't gone away. There's people that are coming in that want to do certain different things to that property now. So the, the management of these cases is, it just keeps getting extended due to different dynamics of what, how the property changes hands or as-built things that we're finding out there that we have to deal with. So there's, and we also have a, I think two drawers in plan check of things that have been left over from the urgency ordinance that we'll no doubt have to deal with at some point in time. It's, once the ordinance, once there was a ban in place, it just kind of was left in limbo. But now with the anticipation of regulations, we get inundated with a lot of interest in previous projects and some of them are several years old. And those are, that's playing catch-up. And it's, it's really a detriment to the staff to have to do all this work to try and make things right on past things that couldn't close out in the past. So it's a, it's a, it's a frustrating situation.
Well, that's why we gave you staff.
Yeah, and I hope to keep them.
When we did this last year and it was supposed to be a continuance, and I, I don't know if, speaking into my mic, I don't, I don't know where you are now on your officers and their duties. But originally, I think three of these were hired under the urgency ordinance and their duties were specifically for cannabis. During the registration period, they'd go out and inspect farms and, and for codes and whatever, and that was their sole duty. Now, and I think that might've been the expectation for, for last year when we gave the money and kept them on, I don't know if you have three of them continuously on cannabis issues period, or they're going out on other code issues too.
They're, we're sharing duties because of the workload. The number, the caseload comes in, so we have to respond to the caseload and some of them, the distribution has, is as equal as we can make it because we have the county broken down into different, five different districts. So each code officer operates in that district. There, there is a lot of activity with some of the code officers still on the cannabis issues that's still happening. So the, yeah, the need for that is, is, is proven every day.
Supervisor Calley?
So if I understand Gary correctly, code enforcement went from two, oh, by the way, I think Thomas Watts is marvelous, so I, I, that's the positive side. What I don't, what I, I think I'm hearing is the cannabis money was used to hire code enforcement officers. That, and maybe sheriff's officers and others that Gary mentioned, that money's no longer here. So general fund is now paying for that, for those.
That's the way it appears, yes.
All over.
That's, that's what it appears to be, yes.
So-
To the tune of about two and a half million dollars.
So either we bring cannabis back or those positions should be eliminated because they were funded under, I mean, this goes back to sort of a Mike Delorto kinds of things. And once you bring somebody aboard, even if it's for a specific thing, and once they're there, it's hard to let them, it's hard to let them go. It's like your first comment, I don't want to let go of staff. And I'm sure the sheriff doesn't, or some of the others. But we, it was like if you're a grant-funded position and the grant goes away, the position goes away. So here we're doing $2 million of positions that we don't have that revenue anymore. So is it right, I mean, that's our decision as a board, to general fund those positions without having that revenue? As, as much as I've been on the positive end of having a code enforcement officer for D3 and I'm sure the other supervisors feel the same way, that's, that's a big chunk of change.
Oh, I totally agree with you and I think that with the, if there is an anticipation of regulation, which would appear to me as some sort of funding source relative to that activity, that's not in the right, that's, may take a little while to do that. I can only tell you that the workload is strenuous, alive and well, and it comes in all the time. It's, I guess it's a determination of how much, do, how much do we want to pay attention to the need of this? And I think it's paramount that we do because the amount of things that we're finding out there and dealing with, that, that we don't have to come to the board with because we're getting the abatements done before, mostly on a voluntary basis and the staff is very good at doing that. So if we want a nice, accounting free of as much of this as we can afford, I think that's a consideration.
I don't question it.
Yeah, I know you agree with me, yeah.
I've always been a fan of code enforcement and I like that, you know, the way it's organized, et cetera, et cetera. It's just that it was brought to its, not just code enforcement, you were given from two to six employees based on this revenue stream, which we have now said doesn't exist. And I'm just, now we're asking other, other departments and other services to pay for something where we had a revenue stream to pay for it and we no longer do.
And we don't, I think the building and, and code compliance, we would hope to not have subsidies by the taxpayers to deal with these problems. And to come up with, the building department justifying its expenditures with revenues brought in, I think there should be an opportunity to look at code compliance to, to pitch in certain elements of cost recovery that could help reduce the impact on the general fund.
Supervisor Stover?
The, the, the cost recovery, I mean, I consistently, we'll, we'll never realize the whole, the full pie as our, as our, our control will say. So it's always going to be somewhat a strain, but the, so there, there's numbers missing here that are crucial in my mind. 2016, when three of those people were directly related towards regulation. From what I understood, from hearing yours prior, which I, I can't confirm because I don't have them in front of me right now, in 2016, there was, there was over 70 some odd eradications done by code compliance, while three worked on specifically regulation. As opposed to 2018 where we had 37 and 10, a total of 47, whether voluntary or not, that they have a full five working on instead of a three over here and two on the other side. So the, the, these numbers are crucial in, I think, us making our final decision. And I, just earlier this year during a study session, when we're talking about cannabis regulation and you're talking about anticipated revenues supposedly coming back in, do I need one of those?
I was going to pass them to you.
You know, we were told by them that they need to hire more people. While they still have three there from the original regulation that we're carrying with our general fund for the most part. I mean, $91,000 helps with one, FD, in my mind. And the costs that go into this are exponential. I, I, you know, I was here during that budget meeting when, or it was prior to the budget meeting, it was in April, you know, when they, they were trying to justify retaining their positions and those are, those are, those are hard lines to draw. And I mean, they, 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 they sold a bill of goods and I, I even got up and spoke on that side of the podium that day and I said, that's a hard one. I talked about five years till, to delivery on those and realization. And this is an issue that's costing the county a lot of money. And environmentally, we do need it to a certain degree irregardless, because we need to protect the citizens of the county, but at a certain point, we can't be hiring more and more people and becoming a police state.
Or hiring more and more people and getting less results. Supervisor Stoffnall, did you have a-
Yeah, and I understand, I hear what Ben is saying. And again, the board made a conscious decision because we did have some funds left over and we had from taxes to, to continue this. And they did make statements that they did. But some of the, the figures from going back to 2016 and 2017 are inflated as far as Because at that time, you still had the ongoing urgency ordinance and them being licensed by the county. And a lot of them didn't conform when code went out to them. a lot of them didn't conform when code went out to them. So that would count as an eradication, when they didn't get their license, because they didn't fulfill all the things that were required to them. So they were eradicated. So every time that happened, and it happened a lot, because we only had 190 registered out of 750, those, those were inflated in those numbers, as far as how many they were doing that year. And the possibility existed when they came to us last year, that they assumed that it was going to continue that way. And I'm not, you know, I can't speak as to why they did sell us, they came before us. And we agreed to, and I point to Marita and her questions, and Judy and Rebecca are back there. Ethan was done, and which we just agreed today, to bring him on full time. Ethan was one of these employees, and has remained out there the way these other employees were supposed to. But they fell through the cracks, and they ended up being on our, our control list, when they should have been temporary employees through the urgency ordinance, until we found out what we were going to do with a permanent ordinance, or what regulations or what. When it came down to January 2018, they were all of a sudden on the control list. So we had to make a decision, and we made the decision at that time to continue with them, at least last year. And now it's before us now. And you're right, it's over $2 million that these employees are on these roles. It's now the general fund. We had tax money before that we were using. We had this big lump of 13 million, or whatever it was. And we had that money in front of us. We figured, okay, we'll continue this program as far as eradications go for this year, because we had the money. And like, again, we gave $989,000 to the sheriff's office. We gave money to his office, a half a million dollars, to continue going down that path. We consciously made that decision to do it. And now it's here, this year, before us again. And that's the conscious decision, whether we want to continue funding it. We're going to come up against the sheriff's budget and see the same type of thing happening too. And whether we want to continue funding the $1 million for eradication in his met team and code compliance.
Of course, we could always get the cannabis urgency ordinance going and get money, or I mean, permanent ordinance and get money.
And that's, that's a discussion we should have, because it affects our budget.
But let's, let's be sober about it. We're never going to generate $13 million again with the programs that we're talking about.
Not in the same sense, no. But, you know, that $13 million is like, sorry, turn this on. That $13 million has lasted multiple years. It went down to nine last year. This year, somewhere around 4.5, approximately, plus or minus. I go front of the, front of the book and get you the exact number. But, you know, until the actuals actually come out, you know, this is definitely, I think, a budget conversation, maybe for the end of the day, that we need to have, because it's part, part of our revenue generating, and we've already had two study sessions on it this year.
So what do you guys want to do? Want to accept the CIO's recommendation? Do you want to dig into it? Marita?
Yes, I want to keep code enforcement as it is. I'd like to realign some of their priorities, but that would be a sidebar for Jeff and I.
Supervisor Toffnelli?
This preliminary budget, and going forward, I'm, I'm okay with the CIO's recommendation. They're his recommendations. We'll see where we're at next year, and where regulations or the county's going, and what's going forward. Apparently, we have the money under his recommendations of his budget for this operation right now. So I, I'll be in favor of the recommendation to the CIO.
Supervisor Stoppa?
I agree with Gary. The recommended is good for now. I'm not in favor of adding the extra $150,000 back in that's being requested.
Is that in the CIO's budget?
CIO's budget.
So, okay, so you want to keep it there?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Mills?
Looks like I'm outvoted.
No, he's two bits in.
Yeah. Because I would like to definitely see it, but I know we're going to be reviewing this again. So it's just a matter of when we make that decision point. You know, we built this bus, so this board didn't. It happened back in 2015, 2016. We're dealing with the end result of the, of what happened back then, and we'll continue to deal with it for years and years and years. I can tell you that 40 years ago, what the sheriff's department was eradicating, with some of the guys in the back 40s, they eradicated sometimes every year. So this is not going to go away anytime soon. And we just have to accept the reality that we're in the crosshairs. And for, we don't want to leave anybody who's outside this county the impression that we're an easy target. So we need to be sure that we are ensuring the safety of our environment and our people here in our communities. And you're, you and the sheriff are the first line of defense on it. So that's why I was supporting the additional $50,000.
I will, I will support the CIO's recommendation with the asterisk that we're going to take a hard look at this in September against those numbers. There's one thing I really dislike, it's being sold a bill of goods. So, you know, we've got a whole summer, these people were hired to eradicate illegal cannabis. It's going to be a long, hot one. I want to make sure, and I, to Mike, to channel Mike Delorto, I do, am very concerned about, you know, when we hire people in temporary, and then they become permanent, and it grows. That's how bureaucracies grow. And that's maybe not the intention of the board.
Well, I, I would like to say that of all the things I have inherited as an interim, this has probably been the most troubling for me to deal with.
Okay. So I guess we'll stick with the CIO's recommendation until September.
Okay.
Do you have any Milky Ways?
Marita's searching for candy. Department has, it's your opportunity.
We appreciate your time, Jeff, and we.
Thank you. And I also appreciate you standing by, by the employees in the building department.
Yes, they're valuable, and I can't stress that enough.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff. All right. Integrated Waste Management. Brian, let's talk garbage.
I own your garbage.
Let's talk trash. How's that?
Let's talk solid waste.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Brian Moss, Deputy CIO.
Hang on. I don't know if we need to do a presentation. Let me see if there's any questions or any changes. May save, save your staff. Other questions or changes to CIO's recommended, recommended budget?
A wave of money from the grant system, huh?
I'm sorry, was that?
A wave of money from the grant system?
Well, we did pick up a little bit of money in the grant system.
A little bit.
Yep, yes, we did. As some of you may recall, we did that a lot in the old department as well. So.
Good job.
Long live the grants.
Good job.
Supervisor Stoppa, you got a question?
More so, are you happy with what the CIO has recommended for this solid waste management?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I appreciate your time, Brian. I appreciate how much you keep us updated on everything that you're working on. And you've done an excellent job so far on this.
Thank you, sir.
Are you okay there?
Supervisor Toffnelli?
You're removing the position 9601 Waste Manager?
The actual Waste Manager position is something that we'd be looking at, at final, in concurrence with certainly our CIO. What we did last year, we had, as the board may recall, we actually had the Waste Manager in place for preliminary budget. The previous CIO decided by final budget to take that out and develop a compliance manager, which we did do. We never filled that position. But after, well, it'll be a year at the end of the month that we've had this program, I have determined that instead of filling that position as a compliance manager, go back to the original plan, and go back to the IWM manager full-time down at The Rock.
Okay. Because your appropriations for contingencies has changed pretty substantially.
Yes, primarily due to capital improvement projects that we have taken off the board. I'll give the board a quick example of what we're trying to do in IWM. Last year, we would have bought a new service truck for, for, for Rock Creek. This year, we found out that Public Works had an older service truck that wasn't meeting their needs any longer. They were willing to actually transfer that over to us. We took the, all the equipment off the old truck and put it on the new truck. Apparently, the, the new truck that we received, the new old truck, had issues going over 55 miles an hour. So what we did is we put foam in the tires, and we put it on, on, on the landfill, and it's never to go 55 miles an hour or over again. So that's an example of where we are saving money, where I would have spent maybe $60,000, $70,000 for a vehicle. That's money that I won't be spending. There are other items that we looked at, such as the water, the water availability out at Red Hill Yard Waste Facility. And for some reason, in the past, the, the well was deactivated, and we were running off of a spring. We reactivated the well. And at this point, even though the tank leaks a little bit, because it's a redwood tank, we're able to stay up with production. Where beforehand, they were talking about a 200,000-plus program to redo the water system. So that's been taken care of as well. So those are the, just a couple examples where we're, where we're saving some money.
And you also put up owl boxes.
Pardon me?
You put up owl boxes?
Oh, yes. The owl boxes with the vegetation management program that some of you will be seeing report to the water board here shortly. So we mowed both Red Hill and Rock Creek, and the owl boxes have been produced by staff, facility staff. And we have our birds of prey working our landfills.
Brian, are those owl boxes like the ones like Mike Walker's son did for his blah-blah voice scout program?
You know, I don't know if I remember seeing one of those. I don't remember if I saw one of those, but I'm happy to send the board some photos of our owl boxes.
Oh, that's great.
She's already installed at Red Hill. Rock Creek is being installed today.
Yeah, she's talking about Jason Wheeler. Anyway, so you're comfortable with where you are on this budget?
Very much so.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Toffnelli?
Yeah, Brian, do we have any commercial size type diesel vehicles that go on the road?
We will, we will have one. Right now, it's, it's mainly off-road vehicles. There's, there's some issues. The old air pollution control hat that I used to wear, I can tell you that we've got some deadlines coming up in 2020, 2023 for off-road versus on-road. You will see in the budget that we're proposing a brand-new vehicle. It'll have to meet the ARB and your local district, which is you, board standards for the tier, I don't know if it's tier three, three or four standards. But to answer your question, really, our equipment, there's some diesel equipment as far as three-quarter ton vehicles, those kinds of things we have to look at. As a matter of fact, we're just, I was just reviewing that list the other day. So those are upcoming expenses.
2016 and newer?
Correct.
Or you have to?
That is correct.
Yes. So that's my concerns as far as the budget going forward.
Absolutely. And, and that's a real concern for us. Concerns, just so you know, for the future for IWM, closing Phase Two, opening Phase Three, that's a big one. And I mentioned that the other day. The diesel retrofit, off-road versus on-road as well. I'm less concerned about on-road, quite frankly, because I don't have a lot of equipment that I use on-road.
Yeah, that's why I was asking. It's primarily on-road right now until 2023, but.
Right. But, but the off-road includes my grinders and, and those kinds of equipment, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
All right. Is everybody okay with the CIO's recommendation budget?
Very good?
Yes.
Now to Nodz. Ryan, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Library. Excellent. We got a presentation yesterday. So.
Did we come to some agreement on that movement of that limited-term position?
$14,400.
Yeah, $14,400.
I thought it was 14.
It's 14,4, 14,4.
I thought I was on the fourth.
You were gonna, you're on the.
You're on the fourth.
I'm on the fourth.
Write your check with no cap.
Well, if, if, if I could, there's, there's a couple points. One is, and Marita asked this yesterday, and it was offline, and I wanted to come back to it. So her question was, if we only did the part-time position, as was the fallback plan for the library, what would the effect be to the services? And what we heard yesterday in the presentation is that if we fall back to that, there will be one less day of the services they already provide.
She said that.
So there, there is a reduction to what she had hoped to put through. That $14,000 right now is being funded by friends of the library. And we could still go back to them for the permanent position, even if it wasn't limited term, and go back and ask for that same level of funding. I have no idea whether they're interested in continuing to do it on an ongoing basis. So the 14,4 is to make it permanent with a reduction of hours, the full, I think it was 38, going off the top of my head, for the hours that she requested with the benefits. And so that was actually her request yesterday.
Was her actual request was what, 34?
Uh, do you have it there? I think it was 38, but it was.
35, 30, 30.
I guess the question is, since we had the library yesterday, anybody want to suggest a change to the CIO's?
36, 558, I think.
What was it?
36, 558, I think, was her original request, $5,400.
So all-in cost.
And I just want to be, to be fair to Nancy with her not being here, that her, her original request was the full request. And only as an option, if that wasn't going to be approved, that secondarily, the, the part-time, I think, 18 or a little less.
36, 553. I, I would, I would, I would like to see the full funding, 36, 553.
I agree.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Jeremy, as well. Library gets your position. Any other changes to this lackeyard budget? All right, move on.
I'm sorry?
Mike?
I apologize, Susan.
He's not here.
Do you want me to do that all again? Oh, yes.
I'm going to have our director present that.
We're gonna.
Which we don't have. So that will be me in this case. So I'll touch on that real quickly, where you'll notice the most significant, and there are some significant increases, primarily in professional services. And there's a couple things in there. We are due for a local hazard mitigation plan, which is a requirement. And it's due in October of next year. They typically take about a year to put through. We've done them in 90 days, but our partners at the state and federal government don't like to see us do that. So there's monies in here for consultant to prepare that. There's also monies in for consulting services, for lack of a better term, for on-call emergency services to, to serve in the absence of the director until we get that position open. So, I mean, filled, rather. So those are built into professional services. There's also some additional dollars requested in equipment, primarily in terms of things that we may need, items that we need to fully outfit an OES center, if that chooses to be the way that we, or if that's the way we choose to go in the future and having a standalone operations center.
Questions from the board? Supervisor Mills?
Yes, there's a notation here about returning $242,000 to our CRC.
Yeah. That was, oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. Which line is that in?
I think we had a separate budget for that one.
I was gonna say, I think that's in a special revenue.
I think it's actually in, no, it's in a separate budget.
Let me look at the final.
It's in, it's on page 318.
318?
Yep. We actually have a separate budget unit that we were tracking costs associated with our CRC grant.
That's why I couldn't.
The 242, 833 are the unspent grant dollars that we received.
Yeah. I've got it circled. I just, it didn't fit within the realms of logic.
It was for buttfire recovery, and the agreement we had was if we didn't expend it by this certain date, we were to return it.
Correct.
And they'll invest it in Buick County or Shaster, whoever burns down in the summer.
Yeah, hopefully so.
It's, it's heartbreaking, but.
It could be us again. We might see that same money.
Thank you, Ben.
I know, I know, wish it on anybody.
Where are we at on tree mortality?
There, actually, we'll have a presentation on that in the next board meeting. TSS has approximately 21 projects. They're progressing quite well. If you saw the article in the paper. If you saw the article in the paper about three weeks ago, that pretty much cataloged where they're at. But they're actually trying to expedite as much as they can in the remainder of this fiscal year. And I can't speak more eloquently than that off the top of my head. I certainly can get some more data for you and bring it back, but they will present at the next board meeting.
Well, I know they're keeping the Foothill Fire Safe Council in the loop and I do attend their meetings every month, so I just wanted to have it as a verbal statement where we're at. On Butte Fire, Butte debris, which is page three-twelve, Rebecca, is there any idea when we'll finally have that all closed out?
Okay, hold on, let me make sure I'm looking at the right one. You said three-twelve?
Three-twelve. That's the debris.
That, we have an outstanding invoice with Tetra Tech to try to close out the remainder of that. I'll be following up with the project manager with Tetra Tech on that after that bill is paid, because we do need to get that closed out. And the reason I really, really want it closed out is if you look at the bottom-line budget for that, it is a net contribution to the general fund of seven-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars. Those are for costs that we expended in, you know, through eighteen, nineteen and prior years that exceeded the notice of obligation and exceeded the amount of money that I can even claim against those projects. So once we're able to close that project out, then CAL OES and FEMA can look at it and then we can get our net project overrun costs back to us.
You figure ninety days or six months, or what do you think? You don't know?
No clue.
Okay. Because until this is closed out, that ain't happening.
Correct.
Excuse my French.
Right.
But, you know, if we want that money in the system, we're gonna have to close out that project.
Right. So I'm just waiting for that last bill to be paid. I need to coordinate with the project manager to see if there's anything else that's outstanding. And at that point, I don't really know if CAL OES will go ahead and release the funds that we prove are expenditures in excess to us immediately, or if they will wait until FEMA does their official closeout, which could take a really long time. My understanding is, it looks like how they're handling Lake County's closeout is on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So if that's how it goes, it's gonna take a while for, to get that closed out. So I'm hoping between the two counties, we can figure out a better methodology of closing those projects out, but we'll see.
And likewise on page thirteen about the firework, that's the two-million-two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand?
The, that is, that one, we are not closing that out anytime soon. The issue with that one is, if you recall in one of the, one of the presentations that Michelle did, there was a second phase of trees that were identified to be removed. I think at the end of the day, it's like one-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-five trees. That is a second phase. In order for us to proceed with any work on those trees, it has to go through environmental. We couldn't get it through environmental until CAL OES and FEMA agreed to the scope of work change inclusive of that additional fifteen-hundred trees. I just got the letter, I think on Monday, that that was approved, so the scope of work was approved and the extension to June of 2020 was approved. Once that happened, then environmental with FEMA can go ahead and evaluate the program and then we can, once we get approval on that, then we can move forward with actual removal and monitoring and the whole project again. So that's not going tomorrow. It'll be a while.
I don't want an exuberant expectation, but hopefully this will be done this year. Chair Garamendi.
Environmental is, you know, we're at the mercy of that agency. So, you know, it's a bad time probably to start having all this go through environmental because if there is a more urgent emergency somewhere else in the state or somewhere else in the nation, then that's gonna take precedence over what we're doing. So we just keep reaching out and keep getting updates and we can let you know as we hear more, but that's where it is at this point. So at least we got the letter on Monday.
Nothing would make me happier, Supervisor Mills, to wrap that sucker up.
Just like, you know, there's another one on page three-twenty-one about Butte Trees, private.
That would be related and that...
To the Tetra Tech.
Yeah, so the caveat, which page is that, three-twenty?
Three-twenty-one.
Three-twenty-one.
Yeah.
So the first, there, it's really the same project, the burn tree removal debris project, but one is on private property and one is not. And so the private property debris removal program related to those trees, that then has the added component, which Supervisor Garamendi loves, is the insurance recovery part of it. So that's why they're split up, so we can track the costs associated with both of those different activities. But that piece will probably take longer than the other piece because you've got the added component of the insurance recovery on those.
Even when you add in page three-twenty-three and another million dollars, there's a lot of general fund money that's sitting in these various projects. If we could just simply get them closed out or get them done, it would relieve a lot of stress.
Yes.
I think on the part of the staff as well as on the part of our budget.
Yes.
And on supervisors.
That's it.
Good. Any changes to the CAO's recommended budget for OES? Seeing none, I think that is complete. We'll move on to planning budget.
Chairman Garamendi, can I interrupt you just for a second?
Certainly.
Sorry, on OES.
Under Sheriff.
With respect to...
Brian, are you standing there?
It's okay. I'll be brief. With respect to OES, involving the considerations of hiring a, an outside part-time consultant or a full-time OES director, I would like to make the reasonable request that the sheriff's office be involved in that hiring process or the vetting process. I'm concerned about getting somebody who's experienced in emergency management, similar to what we have here in Calaveras County. And there's been some people that are kind of high on education, high on certification, but maybe lack some experience. We're already in the middle of fire season right now, so I just want to make sure that we don't end up meeting a consultant or a manager during the middle of an emergency and it, you know, we not had a chance to kind of test that person prior to that. Thank you.
Do you want to respond?
I appreciate that. That's a very good point. We've been working on a contract with, as you know from my weekly communications, we've worked on a contract with Harrison Associates. They're all retired CAL OES, they're all, they've all been working all over the state and some of them were here in 2015 and are familiar with us. So they are experienced, they won't be primary, primarily burdened with being in the OES center, they will be on-call services for that, but they're primarily coming in to help us move through projects that we have, analyze where we're at, get us started in the local hazard mitigation plan. It's not ideal to have them starting in the middle of the fire season, that's absolutely correct, but we've been working on this since, since I came in and it's just a matter of how long it takes to get a contract resolved and moved through. And then, once we get a director on board, you know, if we're able to do that here soon, then they'll move off. But once they're on board and we get the contract in place, we'll make arrangements for everybody to meet with them and get the lay of the land and work closely with them.
Supervisor Mills?
The point being is, is that whoever that's gonna be has to work well with the sheriff's department, has to work well with the fire system. And yes, OES, former OES people do have that conceptual knowledge, but this is somebody that's gonna have to be very hands-on. They cannot, they cannot be sitting in a distance in an office, so...
Are we talking about the consultant or the permanent?
Either one, either one. It's not gonna be successful.
Let's move on to planning department, I'll see if anybody has an objection to that. Planning. Questions or changes to the CAO's recommended budget?
Peter, have you been successful in getting your staff? I've been looking at the position control list, but you've made some additions and deletions, et cetera?
We are fully staffed right now. I have to admit that one of those positions is an underfill. We tried for two and a half years to recruit for a planner three. I finally underfilled that with a planner two position. By and large, we have a relatively young and less experienced staff than I would like. We have some great people, but I don't have the kind of expertise that if we have some large controversial projects, that we would be able to handle those readily. You know, so far, we're making do. I do have a couple of planner threes that are on board, some have been here for quite some time, know the lay of the land very well, but just that level of experience is probably the biggest concern that I have about the staffing that I do have.
So the question would be, is that the staff that you have now is capable of handling the workload that's coming up, and I'm talking about getting the general plan completed and, and working on this other potential regulatory ordinance or other land use decisions. I know what's going on down in Copperopolis, so...
Yeah. Right now, we are managing, as I said, we do have two planner threes, one that is, you know, does have the experience and is focusing on some larger projects in the copper area. When we get into some of the general plan implementation with the expectation that the plan will be adopted within the next couple of months, you know, that's going to, we'll have to assess our needs at that point. You know, I think that the concerns that Leslie raised earlier today, and you may have heard from other department heads of, you know, recruitment for high-level experienced staff, particularly planners, is challenging. And it's just something that's across the board of the county that we're having to deal with. It's great when we have planners that we can train from the ground up and, you know, understand the county. Every county has its own unique circumstances and experiences, but, you know, to have someone that can just, you know, jump on a technical project that requires an environmental impact report and just has that base of knowledge from elsewhere is helpful and, you know, for the most part, we really don't have that. But we're making do with what we have. There is one concern I have, if you don't mind me bringing it up at this point, regarding staffing, is with the expectation that we will be having a regulatory, cannabis regulatory ordinance coming up in the future. The direction of the interim CAO, the words of Mr. Alt, is, you know, we did not include that in the budget. So there is no consideration of the staffing needs to address that when that happens. I think that will need to be looked at at the final budget, although we should be recruiting now if we expect to have staff on board with the ability to jump on those applications with the expectation might be a hundred, hundred-and-fifty applications coming in and in a timely manner. It's just, it's not going to be possible if we have the current workload, current staffing, and then suddenly a hundred-and-fifty applications submitted in, you know, September, October, with the expectation they'll be approved by the end of the year. And I think that, you know, there's just a lot that's gonna have to be done, there's not gonna be a week turnaround for those. I don't anticipate the same level of backlog that we had in 2016 with the urgency ordinance, but, you know, even with a hundred to a hundred-and-fifty applications, that's a lot of work. You know, our total workload for the year is in that range of applications. So we'll need to look at that very carefully. The anticipation is that any of that work would be funded by a fee program associated with a regulatory ordinance, but that's not in place yet either. So we need to make sure that both those get in place in a timely manner, that we have the staffing and the funding for that staff, you know, before the ordinance goes into effect. Because there are people already lining up, can't wait to submit their applications once an ordinance is adopted.
Okay.
It's a broader, broader conversation for future.
That's a conversation for future, part of a presentation. Other questions? Supervisor Stoffler, Supervisor Mills, are you done?
No, I'm done.
Supervisor Stoffler?
I'm looking at line nine in fifty-two seventy-two. Professional services, special purpose. You've gone from your final budget last year, a hundred-and-eighteen, nine-seventy-six, to date, you're at a hundred-and-three, but yet it goes down to twenty-six, nine-eighty-one. What primarily was that used?
The general plan EIR.
The general plan EIR.
And the outside council for assistance on that.
Is twenty-six, nine-eighty-one gonna be enough once it comes to the board and goes out for any, if there's anything challenging in it or...
If there is a challenge, that's, that's not in our budget right now.
Not in your budget, it'll be in, yeah, her budget.
Council's office, you know.
In the fifty-two seventy-one, those monies are used for outside consultants on...
Housing element update, other special programs, there's a lot of implementation measures that we will be likely to begin once the general plan's adopted, ordinance, ordinance updates, those kinds of things. We will need assistance on that, and that's the purpose of that.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Stoffler?
The seventeen eighteen year, let me go back to where I was. Apologize. Salary wages, so permanent seventeen eighteen was four-ten. We're looking at two-hundred-and-five thousand dollars or two-hundred-thousand dollars approximately more, it's six-hundred-and-five-thousand eighty now. Do we add positions?
We added positions last year, we're not adding any positions this year. It's a matter of increases based on, you know, salary adjustments, step increases and the one-time cost for the PERS.
Right, yeah, the five-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand was the final on last year, so that would be the adjustment. Where did those, those additions to staff come from?
We provided, I'm trying to remember from last year, one new planner trainee position last year, and we made a temporary position permanent that was approved last year.
All right. So that temporary was originally paid with registration fees from the prior ordinance?
Yes.
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 All right. That's what I was looking for, thank you, Peter.
Are there any additions or corrections to the CAO's budget? Are we all good with planning?
Good.
Good, good. Supervisor Dovinale, good?
This is Sam Rowe.
That's it? Thank you. Peter.
I don't know if that was a warning shot or a courtesy wake-up call.
Wake up, Sam.
Nice to see you all. Sam Leach, Chief Probation Officer.
Right, we're not gonna do the presentation, thank you for introducing, but I tried to keep things moving. I want to go to questions directly to you from the budget and then we'll see if there's any changes. So, sorry for cutting off there, Sam. Looked like you had a good presentation set, ready to go.
Oh, no, no, ready for questions.
Questions from the board regarding your probation's department's budget?
I can start first.
Go ahead.
Because I'm looking, I'm looking at your goals and objectives about a long-term plan to build or renovate a permanent location that, you're scattered all over the place with your various pieces, which is, I'm sure, creating some logistical difficulties. How do you plan on bringing that before the board to begin to fund those changes?
I don't have an immediate plan for that, it's more of a long-term plan. The frustrating part is staying in San Andreas where the services are for, you know, workload. And as you know, there's, there's really not much available. So we have some AB one-oh-nine money that is in reserves that we know we'd like at some point to come forward and propose to use a small chunk of that to help as seed money. You know, the problem is building, if we were to build from scratch and try to build the type of place that we need, you know what kind of money we're getting into. And I know the money's not there and we're in safe, clean spaces for now. They're not ideal. The day reporting center, you know, I've come and griped about that before, some of you have been over there. It's, it's not good working conditions and frankly, we'd be safer and have better connectivity if we were all under one roof. So I think it's wiser that we... one roof. So, I think it's wiser that we piggyback another project when that opportunity presents itself. I have casually gone and toured some buildings and worked with realtors to look at things that pop up in San Andreas, but, I mean, you know what's here. So, finding something that, you know, 6,000 square feet would be on the very small side. 10,000 is probably more what we need. We need to park probably at least 30 vehicles. I mean, you start to look at that, and we've got, you know, we've got the old airport, and I don't know what else that would work. So, it's really a difficult position for me to be in because I know my staff are frustrated with me that I haven't been able to make any progress on this. But it's also one of those in my spare time things as the chief probation officer and trying to do all the things that I have to do to look at that. And then the other thing is, you know, partnering with admin to get some of this work done and to make sure that we're fitting into the overall building space plan. So, it's tough to get attention in that regard, or has been historically.
Yeah. Cost per foot is not exactly cheap in San Andreas. I could get you a lot of space in the Angels camp for a lot less. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Toff, no?
Well, I was just talking to Ben. He knows the same thing. Was there supposed to be a 333 page blank? Go from 332 to 334 with a blank page? Was there supposed to be something?
There's something.
Yeah, there's ones and the other, but this was the first one.
I don't think it's a data issue. I think it's when we talked about the publisher and the interface between Open Gov and the publisher. So, 333 is just that blank page. The schedules look intact.
So, none of the information from 332 was to carry over onto that page? We're not missing any information is what I'm saying. It just seems to go off proposed budget requests highlights and... So, I just want to make sure we had all the information in front of us.
I believe we do. I can't recall all the text that probation submitted to us, but I think that was the end of the text, and then the schedules start behind it.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that's accurate.
Any changes to the probation's budget from the CIO's recommendation that we want to take on? Not seeing anybody raising their hand. Sam, thank you very much.
Thank you as well.
PATV.
Okay. As you'll notice with this particular budget, it is, CIO's recommendation and department requests are aligned. In all fairness to PATV, they did express one concern that could be a future problem in terms of our budget. Apparently, in terms of Comcast, there's a requirement that they're cutting over to all HD, and our equipment doesn't conform to that. So, there may come a time, and it may be in the middle of a fiscal year, that if we don't buy new equipment in anticipation of that cutover, then we won't be able to broadcast. They did express it as a concern overall, and something that we need to keep our eye on, but it wasn't in department requested. It was more to keep it on the radar and as a potential contingency issue. But overall, what they requested is what we approved.
Are they searching for options on that, and what kind of financial expenditure might be required?
Yeah, exploring the appropriate equipment and the cost out on that. They had some detail as to what it would cost. I don't recall off the top of my head. Krista, I think it was about 100 or 150,000 for entirely new equipment to be HD compliant.
Perhaps a bit less, and really, as CIO Halt says, they're kind of in introductory phases of doing this research now. So, we'll have a better, they will approach us, we anticipate at some point with an ask for a CIP project, or at least to get us looped in on where their further requests for quotes, et cetera, lead them in terms of what we can expect sometime in the next. It's really a question mark. Is that your recollection, Al, regarding, yeah, when the switch might happen?
They're trying to work closely with Comcast to determine when that is. Their concern was, and I'm trying to be fair to them in representing their budget, is that while they're working with Comcast, it's a private partner. So, if they decide in January that this happens, then we don't have much to say about it, and it'll be a different discussion. But they are planning for it and trying to work with the partner and fit it into an out-year budget request.
Hopefully, they would be looking at some rural community grants as well, because there are out there for that, for communication, especially in defined disadvantaged community locations. That's all I have. Thank you.
Are there further questions? Seeing none, is there any dissent in accepting the CIO's recommended budget?
So, we get to keep Susan.
We get to keep Susan. Thank you very much, Ed, in spirit. Public Works. Josh, we are, I'm sure you've got a presentation prepared too, but we're going to move to questions to you on your budget.
I'm perfectly fine with that. And I do want to acknowledge Mark Kenzalak here, our business administrator, is here to answer any questions that I may not. So, he's the guy we found wandering around on the, out on the street.
The guy who says, "Hey, buddy, you want a job?"
It's about where we're at these days, so.
All right. Questions for Public Works. Supervisor Toff, would you like to talk?
To start, I'm just going to start with these FTEs, additions and deletions. You've explained here that, I mean, you've explained which ones are actually new and then the others that are being transferred. You're showing six transferred in here on page 347, and then another one transferred in on 351, but you're not showing any deletions from other areas from. So, where are they transferring from?
Great question. So, they are being, for the most part, they're being transferred from Equipment Services Centers. So, that budget unit, we've recommended collaborating or consolidating that within Rhodes since that service primarily serves Rhodes Division. So, those folks that resided there previously have been kind of parsed out as necessary to those various departments.
Thank you for that.
All defer for now.
Supervisor Mills?
Josh, thank you for the Roadhog Grinder.
Anytime. It'll be here in August.
Oh, that's, you're a man after my heart with that. Page 358.
Okay.
358.
358.
I know, I see no CIO recommended.
Yeah. And let me touch on that, and if we need further diving in, I could ask Mark. So, again, this is what I just mentioned previously regarding the Equipment Service Center. We have consolidated that within the Rhodes budget. However, in Open Gov, when we put the request in for the salaries, those showed up in ESC. So, and those salaries are actually incorporated in Rhodes, but it does show as a unique discrepancy showing that we're making a recommend, and we're not getting anything done. But those are covered as part of the Rhodes budget.
Okay, that was the question.
Yeah.
Is where, did we account for them on the other side of the budget?
Yeah, we did. Thank you. It's a great catch.
See if there's anything else. Like, I think I got a couple more here.
Lots of stuff going on. Good luck.
Thanks. We've got a great team. I'm very fortunate.
Got a lot of project on the list.
You know, and I've mentioned that in the past. I like to aim high. I don't want to come here and give you a really conservative, watered-down list, and just in an effort to appease and meet a benchmark. I want to shoot high. I want to be aggressive. It puts us in a position to aggressively pursue when opportunities do come up. When they don't meet the mark, I'm forthright about that. But to me, I'd rather, I'd rather say we're going to hit 10 and actually hit eight than just under-promise and over-deliver. So, that's my philosophy, and I'm going to keep plugging away at it.
I know that the District 10 Director was very impressed with what your group has been doing here recently, and it has been reflected in how they have been supportive in providing additional financial support where they need to.
Yeah.
So, it works well together when everybody's aiming in the same way.
Couldn't agree more.
So, I have no questions about the budget unless you feel that there are some concerns?
No.
Okay.
Any questions? Supervisor Toff, no? You look like you're ready to go.
I am. Josh is pointing at me and smiling, so. I only have one question, and I went through your budget. Last year, it fell upon your budget when we cleared Cosgrove Creek, and you had to come back to the board and ask for money for that. And we discussed this about building it into this year's budget so that didn't occur. Do you have money for Cosgrove Creek cleaning in this budget?
So, I don't have that in my current budget. It's an interesting thing, being on private property and us providing services for, you know, primarily for public. So, in the past year, working with CIO LUTS, with those, when those invoices came in, we forwarded those to the CIO's office to Al's predecessor, and the CIO's office actually processed those. And so, that is not in my particular budget. I'm not sure if that's been incorporated. We could certainly look for an opportunity at the board's direction to incorporate that either in my own budget or in another appropriate budget. Although, I would say, and I think I've mentioned this a couple of times, doing work on private property, I can't use road fund dollars for that. So, we'll need to find whether it's general fund or another revenue source to provide that resource.
Correct.
Yep.
So, we need to have that discussion.
I would concur with Gary. That runs through my district also, and that's definitely mitigating a public safety hazard through the flood plain throughout Lock and Tenner and going into Rancho Calvert.
Starts on our ranch, so.
It's your fault, right?
We only clear snow on public roads, not private roads?
Plowing?
Plowing.
Yeah, so we only plow on public roads and public property. If it's private, that's the responsibility of the property owners, so.
So, we don't go into Forest Meadows? We don't go into other subdivisions that aren't maintained by public dollars?
No, we should not be. And if they are, please let me know. I'll follow up. But, no, we don't. And similar to the other issue, we can't be, we can't utilize public funds and public taxpayers on private roads or private property. So, I'm not aware of that occurring. My road crews are pretty good at handling those respectfully. But, no, that shouldn't be occurring.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
And you can't do it at the Arnold Library either.
Well, that's, yeah, that's a similar, it's a county-owned building, but it's not in the maintain mileage. So, that's the spot where one of those things where a little bit of a silo effect, where even though it is a county-owned property, it's not in the maintain mileage. So, that falls upon facilities to have, you know, appropriately, you'd have an on-call, snow removal contract, a small one, and be able to provide those services.
And you can't use it on the campus either.
We can use it on, I believe, on this feeder road, on Government Center and this feeder, because I think this feeder road's in the maintain mileage system. Don't ask me why, but it is in the system. So, theoretically, if it ever did snow to the point where we had a foot of snow in San Andreas, I think we've got a lot bigger problems, but we could theoretically plow snow in the parking lot.
No, but the maintenance of Jeff Tuttle Road is the county. But, maintenance of the roads within the campus or not?
Yeah, the ones that are in the maintain mileage system, we certainly can. I know Government Center, we can. That's part of a project upcoming. Jeff Tuttle's a part of that. I think some of the interior roads are, others aren't. And so, it just comes down that demarcation line. If it's in the maintain mileage system, we can use gas tax and highway user fees to do that. If not, then we can't. We can do it. We just can't use road fund dollars to provide that service.
And I know, I know your crew is doing an excellent job in those touchy areas called encroachments. But, the new system that you have up and in place now is working, and I know that constituents are already responding positively to it. So, if that helps to save resources and get information tracked correctly, that could probably affect your budget and the outcome.
Yeah, I agree with you. I don't think there's necessarily a tangible way. I think, I think you'll see that through more efficient service, but I think you'll see us doing more with, you know, being able to respond more timely. So, again, I don't think that's something I can quantify. Made efforts in the past. It's a 10 to 20-fold improvement on the investment we make in that service is my rough estimate. But, yeah, I agree with you. I think anecdotally, when you look at this, that benefit will be, you'll see that in our operating costs. That's all I have.
All right. Are there any changes to the CIO's recommended budget, or are we willing to accept it as it stands? Looking down the list. Mills are good. Calvert's good. Stopper? Gary, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll see you soon.
You know, we're taking on the sheriff next, and so, let's take a 10-minute break, and then we can stretch and limber up. And we'll take a 10-minute break, and then we'll start up again at a couple minutes before 3:00. So, we're going to get it done. Welcome back. We're taking on the sheriff's unit. I want to pause for half a second. At just, at lunch, I was talking with our planning director, and he said there's a possibility that we may have the general plan back to this board as early as mid-July. So, I wanted to sort of poll everybody and see if, and this is an if, but I wanted to put an asterisk on the date of July 30th to hear the general plan. Would that work for folks, or anybody, what do you think? It's an if it's ready.
Do you think it's, do you think it can be done by this board in one day, considering how many days of?
Well, we can start and see how it goes. You guys want to set aside two days, or?
How many days has the planning commission had it?
Four? Four?
More than.
More than four.
Six. Susan's been.
You've been there, so you know. That's why I'm thinking is that this isn't going to be a one- or two-day affair if we're serious about looking at it. In the detail, we're looking at this.
So, would you prefer to set aside a day and then do it another week, or do you want to do a series of meetings for that when we get there?
I'm leaving at the first.
Can you turn your microphone on?
So, what about if you did, we have a board meeting on, already scheduled, the 4th Tuesday would be July 23rd. What if you do subsequent days to that?
I'm sorry, can you say it again, then?
We already have a meeting on July 23rd. What if we did subsequent days following that, like we do budget hearings?
Twenty-four, twenty-five. What do you think?
I believe that's a little ahead of what Peter was putting for them finishing with the planning commission.
Okay.
So, we could schedule.
Twenty-seven was the day that he.
Yeah, so we could schedule a 30th, I think, I believe, a fifth Tuesday's on the 30th.
It is, but I think we have supervisors who will not be here on the subsequent days.
For the first through the sixth is what she said?
My second, first, well, I'm sorry, I got confused. We were talking about July 30th?
30th. So, we, is there 31 days in July?
There's 31 days.
So, we could schedule two days in a row there.
And see how we do, and then we could continue in the meeting.
Would that be good with your schedule, Rita?
That gets you done before?
Yeah. Could we ask Peter if he could start the 23rd, or did he for sure said that's the 23rd?
I think they're going to need that week.
Okay.
What do you, I mean, if he comes in here before then and tells us not, but I think we ought to err on the side of caution.
So, if he's not ready that week, I don't know how it's getting into an agenda and onto the web and published to meet that Tuesday, the 30th, if he's not done.
Well, let's, if it's all right, let's do this. Let's circle back and figure out the mechanics of how to do it. But, let's set aside the days amongst ourselves. We can always give them back. This doesn't set us in stone. Through the 30th and the 31st. Is everybody, nobody's off on holiday?
It's holidays. That's a holiday weekend.
The 31st?
Isn't it? Is that?
Of July?
Of July, no.
31st of July. My wife's birthday is next day, but that doesn't make the whole week a holiday for me.
It's a holiday. Oh, that's for her.
It's a holiday for me and her.
That's right. Don't forget that.
Okay, so, if it's all right with you guys, let's set aside those two days, and this is all.
Okay.
And we can decide from there where we want to go, maybe the middle of August, and do the number of days necessary to finish it in that third week of August?
We're going to have a really good idea how quick we're moving by 31st.
Right.
Two days is a good jump to see if we got it done.
But if we could tentatively set aside that now, that if we need to add some, add some days to it, that we do it that third week of August.
Let me, if it's all right with you guys, let me circle back with you, with y'all.
Okay.
But, we'll hold those two days and see how we do. Sheriff's Office. You guys ready? Let's, under Sheriff Macedo, we've got the presentation yesterday, so we could just get down to questions and math.
Sure, ready when you are.
Who wants to lead up? Supervisor Toff, no, your microphone's on.
No, not.
Simon, you want to start? Supervisor Mills?
So, everything that we had discussed yesterday, we will plug in, add to, make those appropriate adjustments and.
Exactly.
Excuse me.
We were talking about, we were talking about adding on the two more vehicles.
Well, that was what the presentation was. What we've done on the others is track what the requests were, and then.
Right. So, those requests are in. We don't need to go over them again.
Could you go back to that sheet, Krista?
Well, we'll do it later.
It's all right. Just a point of clarification on a couple of these.
Into the microphone, Krista. Into the microphone, Krista, please.
Yeah, just a point of clarification on a couple of these items. So when we went back through, the repeater battery was actually in that budget unit, so no change was made there. With respect to the positions, the limited-term trainees that were added back in, the dollar figure was slightly higher than, than what you saw yesterday, so that overall number is 208, 494. If we look here, just to kind of give an overall view of where we're at, at this point, after the discussions we've had yesterday and today, if we were looking at taking this from our contingency, our overall requests, anyone, please jump in here if you see something that you think might be incorrect, but would bring us to a drawdown of 438,000 and change, leaving a contingency of a little over 1.16. That includes the reduction to the coroner's budget, the increases we discussed to the district attorney's budget, the full request for the library assistant position, the three limited-term positions, the captain position, the fully outfitted F-150s at two, the hostage negotiation found, the drone, and a transport van. To the extent that any of these are items that you weren't fully decided upon, we included them here anyway, and I'm remiss to not mention the $200,000 decrease to the professional and specialized services and county councils budget. To the extent that any of these haven't been fully decided, please, please give us your direction as you see fit.
I don't remember deciding on the captain position that we would, I mean, my recommendation is, was that we look at it when we finish.
The purpose of the spreadsheet that we have is to reflect, if you were to take all the requests, what the impact to the contingency would be. We're not presupposing any of these have been approved, except for those that you've already pulled on. And probably important to note while, why we're showing this come from contingency is because revenues and salary savings and all those things have already been accounted for in our projected budget. You know, we can only spend T O T or property tax or salary savings once, so they're programmed in already. There's no additional monies to cover this. This is the impact if we take action on any one of those things. So we tried to design this, I'll say we, Krista, designed this in such a way that you could plug and play anything in that spreadsheet and see the end impact to contingency.
Can I ask for a point of clarification? I noticed you have the repeater backup batteries already budgeted. Was that approved and recommended in the C A O's budget? Because I had that listed for 14,000 as an unaccounted-for issue.
So I had it dispatched, and I had it approved. I apologize, Captain Macedo, I cannot get onto Open Gov right now to show you it's not working in this room for some reason.
That's okay, that was just one.
But it is, it was in the line item that I cited for my equipment.
Oscar, I think, is gonna try and verify that. And then my second question is on cell number eight, the positions. I noticed that's up to 208, and you noted that it was expensive. There, there was quite a discussion among sheriff's office staff yesterday after the meeting, trying to make sure we're comparing apples to apples and not apples to oranges. The limited-term position deals with current employees that will continue to receive benefits while they are in the academy. The true recruit position, those we hire from outside of the agency, are considered like similar to extra hires and do not receive. So depending on the makeup of that five will depend upon the actual cost. We have never considered putting three limited-term positions into the academy. We don't want to suck those folks out of another division, so it should be two.
I thought you were.
For a total of five, three from the outside with a maximum of two internal. But I can't guarantee you what that makeup's gonna look like until we actually make those hires, we're in that hiring process right now. But what I can tell you is we do not want to pull three people per se out of the jail because that causes problems in the jail. So we've limited ourself from internal hiring, putting people through the academy, to a maximum of two. One of the people we were targeting is not, that's not going to happen, so it could be one. So I'm, I'm comfortable with budgeting high and anticipating high, but I know we are not going to be putting three limited terms in the academy. It should be a maximum of two.
Okay, and so then just, and thank you for that, because that clears up, I think, a little bit of the confusion from, from yesterday. So these numbers, the reason why the reductions had originally been budgeted at that, just for the edification of the board, is because that's how our workforce model forecasts those positions in an unfilled state. So with that information, if you don't mind, so we've got 265,000 on the extra hire line.
Correct.
Is that intended to cover in part those positions? And if we were to make those reductions, which would give you that five or two of the three that were contemplated, how would that affect your overall ability to navigate your business in this area?
So we also discussed that yesterday afternoon, and if we were left with status quo, we would be fine. But what you're talking about is an actual reduction to the status quo, and as, and that's what, we estimated, we generated a cost estimate of roughly 170-some thousand dollars.
Ninety.
Ninety-something thousand dollars. So the 208 was a surprise to us yesterday afternoon, or a surprise to us today, but the number yesterday appeared to be a little bit high. We're not talking about a significant amount of money, but if you left us with status quo, and that was the purpose of leaving that amount in the extra hire so that we could place people into the academy, and it left us enough flexibility that we weren't, we didn't have our hands tied based upon whether they were limited term or external hires.
Under Sheriff, on page 389, it talks about three extra hire recruits at 174.
389.
389. At 174, 344? And that would be external candidates?
Correct.
Is that a good number? That's page 389. Is that a good number versus 190?
Yes. For the three.
For the three.
Correct.
Okay. So maybe we should be more realistic in looking at 174 versus 208?
Let me just be, let me make this easy. If we leave it at status quo, don't sweep the extra money, we're only gonna hire five. There's probably going to be dollars remaining in there because we're only gonna hire five, and it's not going to amount to what the status quo was.
Okay.
That'll, that leaves us the flexibility to hire whoever we need to hire without exceeding the amount. If you were counting on sweeping that to balance in addition to the other money we talked about yesterday, then I guess we need to discuss that further.
So this is probably a good time to talk about sweeping to balance. We don't sweep to balance. That's not what we do as a function. The year-end close in all the general fund budgets requires that we bring all the money back in to close out the final year and then reappropriate it. Reappropriating it is what we're doing now. So it's not a function of the C A O trying to balance the budget or, you know, take from the departments. It requires that we go through this process just to close the year. And then if, if authorized in this case, then we'll, you know, it'd be, it'd be appropriated back out, and that's, that's the budget process. I, I understand what you're saying, but I want to make it clear, we don't sweep as a matter of how do we bring the money back in so we can balance the general fund? We bring it back in, we tell you the cash carry, the contingencies, the other things that are funded, and then we read, then we appropriate, appropriate out the rest of the money. And in this case, even the contingency that we planned for, these things would then have to come out of contingency just because of our, not just our county, every county's process of how you close the year out and reappropriate.
So, so maybe the better statement here is, is that you, you feel as though any unused funds should be basically a cash carry for the department into the future year?
Well, that's certainly a board decision, and we've discussed that before about their incentivizing savings. If we had the salary savings across the board or the departmental savings this year, obviously our request from the general fund for the new year would be significantly less. That's a discussion that would involve a two-year budgeting process that I'm sure at this late hour you all don't want to get into. All I, all I can tell you is that the sheriff's office over the last few years has realized a significant amount of savings. I'm sorry that the term swept is not something that people appreciate. We can call it whatever we want, but I, if we had, if we were able to hang on to the savings, we wouldn't have to ask for so much. But I also understand the governmental process of wanting to take that in and look at the entire amount of money in order to budget for the future year.
Because basically, that's what we were talking about two year, last year, was that same process.
Very much to the same extent, yes. Outside of that, there's no other issues with the spreadsheet.
So I do have a question. Your line item where it says total in red, 161, 958?
Oh, sorry, that should be.
You haven't added in the 300,000, the correction, and the board approved 200,000?
No, that includes that.
That doesn't include that. That's, that's, that's from taking all of those added numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, all those.
Do a summary now.
Right, so there you go. And it's kind of hard to see the lower bit in the green there. You can see that that total matches the request total of 438,000, and the contingency is then reduced by that amount. That includes, that does include the 300,000 of reductions. If you want to take a break, I'm happy to confirm that number.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Stopper?
No, I just did the math in my head, and she's right. Computer's right.
So the question is, those are additions to the C A O's budget. Do we want to include those, or do we want to stay with the C A O's budget?
There's certain safety issues that I do think some of that will be needed, but I don't think in it, in its entirety is all needed right now. I'll let someone else speak to that.
Good Mr. President. Question for Rebecca. It has to do with cash flow.
Cash carry or cash flow?
Huh?
Cash carry or cash flow?
Cash flow.
Okay.
And, and I understand the teeter fund and our capital improvement projects is not going to drain that all down during the year.
At the same time, right?
Same time. And historically, when you had cash flow problems, because our contingency was so low, you hadn't used teeter. In some instances, to keep the money paying bills and the flow.
Correct.
We're reducing that.
Oh, so like what, okay.
Yeah.
So I, you, that's a good point. I would say at this moment in time, and probably for the, for this next fiscal year, we'll be fine because we have P G N E settlement funds that are in our treasury that are not going to go out on the same day. We have, we have the teeter balance that's not all going to get drained overnight, and then we have various other funds that we can use in order to balance our cash flow from a treasury perspective. Things that I see out on the horizon that would be problematic for me probably in 20, starting 2021 going forward is, for instance, if, if Public Works Director PAC is successful in moving those projects forward, that gives me a little bit of heartburn. I think if we're successful at actually being able to get the, the debris tree removal done quickly, the road recovery pieces for P G N E, the C I P projects here, yes. And so historically, I would be telling you, please don't drain out teeter because I actually need that from a cash flow perspective, and if we don't have that, then we have to look at trans. So that is something that will be a problem going forward. For this next fiscal year, I am not really concerned going forward. Yes, it will be a, it will be a concern.
So draining contingencies down to this red number that's on the board is not concerning to you?
That's concerning to me just because we are, we're going from a 9.9 million-dollar upside-down budget to a, still an upside-down budget, because we're going to have 4.2 of cash carry, 3.4 of teeter. So what happens when, you know, something else needs to happen? And I can't remember how much we went through from July 1st through present day of our current contingent, but I know it was probably close to a million dollars. So when you look at that, which we just proved, that's your, almost your entire contingent. So I don't feel great about that whatsoever at all, and I think it's also remembering, regardless of what you add to this budget, it just adds to the continued, what are we going to do for 2021? So it's, it's not just adding one, if it's a, if it's a one-time cost, fine, but if it's an ongoing cost, it continues to escalate in the, in the price point for that going forward, and we haven't identified a way to make those funding sources.
Thank you.
Supervisor Mills, lights on, you have more questions?
No, I'll save it, thank you.
Okay, supervisor Calaway, you look like you're here.
Well, if we're sort of negotiating with, on the sheriff's budget, I mean, one of those vans is an AB 109. I'm, really have a hard time going below the 1.6 million and I, for the contingency. And if we have to do some changing at this point, I probably want to change the van. The captain's position, I'm more interested in looking at at a later point so we see where we are.
Can I speak to the, can I speak to the van while we're there? I'd like to be able to take credit for this idea, but yesterday at the end of the day, our auditor controller, who spent a lot of the time at the podium today, suggested that there's, that we do have a local innovation sub-account that has sufficient to cover the van. The, the funding source has been sitting idle back to 2017. It'd be an appropriate use of the funds, and it would be able to accomplish this and clear another account that's been sitting for a while. We just need to make sure that we're clear with the sheriff's office that the expenditure is for the work van and separate and distinct from their AB 109 van. And I know, they know the distinction. Our point is just for tracking purposes, we'd have to make sure that the van that's purchased off the innovation sub-account is utilized specifically for the work van as, as they currently do. So that would give an option for the van without affecting the bottom line here. And again, I'd like to take credit for that, but Rebecca provided it yesterday, so.
Is she talking about the 45,000 plus four?
No, it's, it's a different account. There's actually 98,000, and it's enough to cover the van.
What is the innovative sub-account?
So with the 2011 local revenue legislation that passed, they, the state legislation created all these sub-accounts. So that's where the AB 443 sub-account is, and you've got Health and Human Services sub-accounts. I call it kind of the kitchen sink of realignment that the state graced us with. And as the years have gone on, they've added more sub-accounts to that local revenue fund. And one of them that got added was called a local innovation sub-account. It's, it's still part of government code 30025. It still falls in line with the intent of. It still falls in line with the intent of that realignment, which was through reduction of recidivism and work release programs and alternative sentencing and rehabilitation and all of these things that kind of fall in line with that respective realignment program. So we received a pretty hefty sum for that innovation sub-account, and we really just have not been able to figure out an innovative way of what to do with it. So when the sheriff's department had their slide up there, and I don't know who put it up there, but it said an innovative work release program, I think is what it said, that triggered in my head, oh, look, maybe we can use that. So it's kind of a one-time funding source. It's not something we expected to get. I don't expect to get more. It's just really, it comes, if it comes and it doesn't, if it doesn't. But it's sitting there, I think that it would fit really nicely.
How much do we have in it now?
It's 98,000 and some change.
Oh, sort of the exact match to what he wants. It'll pay for Jack's $4.
Yeah, it's like nine, I don't know. It's 98 something.
Great.
Rebecca, on that innovation, was that monies that are specified, what they're to be used for?
It's a loose specification. So what it says is that it has to be, the board has to approve its use. It has to be used for local needs, and it has to be spent in the same manner that the other sub-accounts would be spent. And it lists the various sub-accounts which are defined with that reduction of recidivism or release.
So it's public safety. I mean, it could be probation.
It could. It could be probation. It could be a public defender. It could be district attorney. It could be kind of any of those that kind of fell in line with that realignment shift that happened.
Okay. Given that it would be funded from the innovative sub-account, then do we take it off of that list, Krista?
What we would do probably is...
You'd add revenue in it.
You would, yeah.
So let's assume, let's do that math.
Just zero it out.
Zero that out.
Just zero them out. And we'll...
Can I go over a calculation when you're ready, Krista?
Sure.
So, again, for the limited-term positions, the academy positions, which is cell number eight, our cost sheet, looking at wages and cost for the three trainees, was it 68,000? You won't need to write this down. Wages and cost for the two limited-term was 63. Academy costs for the full five was 32, for a total of 164,200. So that's about 44,000 lower than what you've estimated. However, looking at what we entered into Open Gov, we entered 191 and some change into Open Gov for about a $16,000 to $17,000 difference compared to what's up on the board there.
Except for, so that PCF data preloaded directly from our workforce system into your respective salary lines. So when we backed those positions out, we backed them out at the full amount. So I'm not, I understand what you're saying in principle in terms of what you need.
Yeah.
But I don't know how much though of what you're talking about is already sitting on the extra higher line because just embedded in the rest of your preloaded salary data at this time that we removed was the 208,000. So that's the part we're trying to reconcile if there's...
So you're looking at what you removed as opposed to what it's going to cost us to put people in?
So for example, that number does not include whatever, if they needed a desk, for example, right? Those items would be elsewhere in your budget. I'm just talking the salary and benefits for those three limited-term positions, right?
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm understanding, though, that 208 demonstrates what you removed from our budget, not what it's going to cost us to put those five through the academy.
That those are the directly salary and benefit, without more. So your basic preloaded base data for salaries and benefits that are associated with those three positions is what that is, not any of the other associated costs like post-training and anything like that.
Ben, you had a question?
I have a train of questions that follows a little bit what I was talking about yesterday. How many people do you have currently in the academy?
Five.
Five currently. So this is going to the next year. So those five, you say you have four empty slots right now that some of those five will be filling. So those slots, when do they graduate, the academy?
I believe July or August.
And so you plan on refilling those positions into the academy as soon as those ones graduate?
Correct.
And you're saying you're going to have up to nine open positions next year with retirees?
Well, we know about...
Approximately.
We know about three or four that are actively either in the process of leaving through their own doings or not.
Right.
In addition to that, we know we have a known vacancy rate across the entire department of about eight to nine. So we are trying to keep ahead by putting people, we are not going to overstaff, we're not going to overhire, but we are trying to stay ahead by plugging the five into the next academy. That doesn't mean all, and let me back up. We currently have 11, excuse me, nine in the field training program. It doesn't mean all nine of those are going to successfully complete the training program or probation. So what we are doing is we are repeatedly putting five through the academy to offset the known vacancy rate. Last year, we put 11 into the academy. Only nine graduated. And in that same time, we had other people that didn't pass probation from previous groups. We've had people retire. We've had people get released from employment for other reasons. So let me just be clear. Our numbers are solid in so much as our staffing, our plan is good. We're not going to overhire, but we're not going to underhire to the extent that we're going to rely upon salary savings and work staff and start going through overtime and double time and all of the problems we've been enduring over the last several years due to not actively recruiting. Did I answer your question? Tell me what I didn't answer, and I will clear it up for you.
You answered my question because you just filled those open slots where I was hoping to find some salary savings for the beginning part of the fiscal year to be able to offset that $208,000.
Well, let me, yeah, I mentioned this yesterday, Supervisor Stoppa. Let me be clear. The fiscal year begins here roughly in a couple weeks. I mean, not technically till July, but these people aren't starting the academy until August. So there is a little bit of savings, but we did calculate that into our number, not necessarily the number that's up there, but the number we plugged in to Open Gov. If one of those people falls off for whatever reason, doesn't pass the academy, then obviously the day that happens, salary savings starts to occur.
To recur, yeah. Understood.
Supervisor Mills?
No.
No? So Supervisor Toffenauer?
Yeah. That's all nice and good, but we're going to fall back into what I mentioned earlier and had to do with code enforcement. And I'm looking at 10100324. I'm on page 418, cannabis enforcement. This is the 900, close to $1 million that we gave last year from the cannabis taxes to keep the enforcement. And this is, I think it was $984,000. We're refunding, we have a question whether we don't have that funding again this year. Are we going to continue to fund this? And this is part of the general fund again that's part of the past urgency ordinance. We agreed to do it last year because we had those funds. So, and Jim, we had that discussion last year during the budget time whether we were going to continue that. And then now we hear that year is gone, we're in front of us now. The CAO has recommended to do it, but not at that level. He has reduced some of the funds to 847,000. And that reduction has to do with service and supplies, some of it. It doesn't reduce the staff level or the salaries and wages. So I think it's a conversation the board needs to have whether we want to continue funding this out of general fund. I know, Jim, but it's still a discussion I think we need to have with this board because it was one-time funding that we did for the sheriff's office. And I'm not sure all of this, these are continuing, all these deputies are continuing under the enforcement, whether they're out doing other duties or so forth that this money was supposed to be for. So I just want to bring it up because if we pass this budget, the recommended budget, then we're agreeing to do it. And then we're going to run up against next year, and we don't know what's going to happen, where we're at looking forward, so.
If I could add, we did have this discussion with them last year, and we did make sure that we acknowledged that it was a single-year funding. I think we can make the same statement again this year. We don't know how long we'll be able to fund this. I think, I'm sure you're pretty bright and good on budgets. I think you understand where we're at. The challenge of illegal marijuana growing has knocked on away.
It has not.
It seems to be getting more complex. I don't know how we can ensure public safety and not continue to do this with the caveat that, under sheriff, we don't know if we'll be able to continue this in the future. We have to find other places. At the time, when we spoke to the sheriff about this last year, we said, you know, if it gets cut, are we going to have to cut deputies or can we shift them to someplace else? And we were assured that we could shift them to someplace else. That was a conversation, and kind of make the same statement again this year. Or as abstract.
Okay. I understand completely. If I could just provide some stats that you requested earlier, and I'll be brief because I know you want to get through this. In 2018, we eradicated 55 marijuana grows, executed 54 search warrants, three BHO labs, 74,000 marijuana plants and change, about 8,000 marijuana, excuse me, about 8,000 pounds of marijuana, another 264 pounds of concentrated marijuana. But let me get to a couple of stats that I think you might be more interested in than that. The numbers of arrests were 24. The firearms seized were 23. We seized $51,000 in cash. This year, year-to-date, we've done 18 eradication sites, seized 32,000 in cash, seized seven firearms, 10 arrests. I could go through a lot of stats with you guys, but I just want to make one note because I know you're interested in cost recovery, and that was a topic of discussion with code enforcement. That doesn't involve one significant major case that extended beyond Calaveras County and actually extended internationally. We're certainly not going to count that money yet, but we're looking at the potential for a large asset seizure related to that case. That case was also a big time eater for staff. So I would like you to keep that in the back of your mind. We also have several other cash, asset forfeiture cases, excuse me, asset seizure cases that have not become forfeiture cases yet. I wouldn't balance your budget on that. I agree with a lot of the statements that were being made that this is not going to be a cost-neutral. But I do want to let you know our Met team is working their tail off. There's a lot of time that goes into even getting one search warrant, incredible amount of work to get to that point. And then obviously, I realize it's expensive with the cleanup. I was just before you yesterday with the contracts. But unfortunately, we did have marijuana prior to, but the urgency ordinance opened up this place significantly and changed the landscape, changed the culture, changed the number of grows, and we are still dealing with the results from that. And we're still going to need to continue to enforce things if you want regulation to work.
With that said, I'm going through your line items on this item.
Okay.
5271, which is professional and specialized services.
Yes.
Last year, we had a budget of $100,000 in it. You went through 126,000 year-to-date.
Correct.
It's been bumped up to 198,000, almost double what we had in it last year. What is, we gave you a contract, we gave you money for a contract, it came before for a contract. So what is this?
That's exactly what that is. That's the removal contractor. Remember, we wanted to have more than one, we ended up with one. We capped that one at 100, so we had to bump it up. And that unfortunately is what they're charging us to remove marijuana.
Is that dirty works one?
It is.
Dirty works contract, so that's what that is. And that reflects, so it was, okay.
Sorry.
So it was in your...
Yeah, but that's not what's possible to go over. Oscar was mentioning helicopters because we utilize helicopter services utilizing that fund as well as DEA. But the driver, and I think what you're asking for is what is driving that number?
Yes.
And it's the removal contractor that's driving that number.
Jim, years ago, I don't know, it's the same now, there was that asset forfeiture with marijuana, and the sheriff's office got to use those funds.
Correct.
Is, how is that working now with the cash or the assets that you get off your eradication today?
So there's a couple of accounts, and the money goes back into those accounts. And then we, during the recession, we had to peel some of that money off and utilize it in order to save some jobs and also in order to fund some critical needs. There continues to be funding going in there, albeit it's a slow process. There's a court process that all of that money doesn't come to us. The DA gets a part of it as well. But that program, to answer your question, Supervisor Calloway, it was running high. It took a significant dip for years. And then when the urgency ordinance came up and we started having a lot more cases, we're starting to see that climb significantly again. We see some real assets as well that we have not sold at this point either, in addition to the homes that I was kind of alluding to. So again, I really don't want the board to count on that money to balance. I think that would be, but I, that is, that is improving. I don't know.
I was just curious, I didn't know if we still could...
We do, yes.
Line item 5701, capital equipment.
Okay.
You didn't have any in the budget last year, you didn't use any year-to-date, but we have a 9350 in there for it. Could that possibly be for a drone?
Yes. I'm sorry. Which one is that?
On page 419.
I'm on page 419.
Yes, that was part of what was budgeted for the drone.
So what we had up here, you're asking the extra for the 14,000?
The drone was split between, was it three budget units?
Correct. It was split.
It was what?
It was split between multiple budget units. Did you want to speak?
Three budget units. What was the total cost of that drone?
17,000 is the total cost.
So we still have this in the recommended budget?
Sorry, Carrie.
Go ahead. No, that's fine.
Krista, will you take us back to the spreadsheet?
No, we made the, you can see, if you look at 5701, which I grant you as a challenge here, you can see the reduction from department requested. This might have been the budget unit in which 50, a little more than 50% of that was budgeted. The other two, I think, had 4.5 or $4,500 in each, and then this one had the balance of whatever that overall capital asset cost is.
Oh, you requested it, okay. All right. Was it CAO did? Okay, that's fine. All right, those are the questions I had.
Krista, can you bring back up that spreadsheet page? Okay. Let's just try to figure out how to bring us to some sort of agreement here. If it's, let's do this, line eight is the board support the trainees' budget item.
If it's, let's do this, line eight is the board support the trainees' budget item. Do you want to pull? This was four. We'll just hammer it out.
Well, and before we do that, I want to point out that the red number at the bottom, we're 345,000 short of 1.6 million. If you take all those up, we're 345 short. So at some point, if you want to maintain the 1.6, you're going to have to find 345 out of that to bring us back to 1.6.
Let's go through this exercise and see what that ends up looking like, and then we may have to go through it all again. So, trainees, Supervisor Callaway. Can you both bring it like?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Supervisor. Supervisor Callaway.
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Stopper? Supervisor Toffenelli? I'm a yes, awesome. So that stays in. Captain's position. We'll go the opposite direction this time. Supervisor Toffenelli. Uh-oh.
At this time, no. I would be open to revisit it when we come back to final budget in September when we have all the final numbers in front of us.
Supervisor Stopper?
I will concur with Gary on that one for now.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Callaway?
I agree with Gary.
So that's no. I'm a yes, 3-2. That is fails. So take out the captain's position with the asterisk. We'll revisit it at year-end. If things change, we could take that up. Two new vehicles. We will, sorry Supervisor Mills this time.
Yes.
Supervisor Stopper?
It's only other way we'd be at the other half, so I mean...
For now until September, we'll revisit it to September. For now, it's a no.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I'm in agreement with that.
Supervisor Callaway?
Yes.
I'm a yes, too. Hostage negotiation telephone on line number 11. Supervisor Stop, sorry Supervisor Toffenelli?
Under Sheriff, could you? I understand what that is, the critical nature of that at this time?
Yes.
It is a yes? It's a critical nature at this time?
It is. The one we have is incredibly old, and that's why we listed it on critical needs. We've, we had a really incredible incident recently where our negotiator was able to pull somebody out of a vehicle. And I'm real hesitant to get into the technological capabilities of this phone, but it gives us the ability to make decisions quicker. There is a cost savings also, not only a life savings, but a potential cost savings to this equipment. If I know a person's not armed, it affects my decision. Therefore, we don't have 10 to 15 people on overtime for six hours or three hours during a negotiation. So am I going to tell you this phone's going to save a bunch of money? No, but I want to walk you through that process. It also, we have people that will refuse to talk to us or don't have a phone where they're at in a vehicle or in a home. It allows us to establish communications with them. And the one we have is really, really, really old, and I'm told it's not even working anymore.
Okay.
To what extent, I don't know.
I'm a yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Stopper? Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yes.
Supervisor Germaine is a yes. That is approved. Next item is drone.
Question on the drone. I understand the drone costs 17,000. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
So if the drone costs 17, and 9,000 was already budgeted?
No, it wasn't budgeted. It wasn't denied by CAO.
Oh, right. Got it, got it. Okay. All right, thank you.
It's going to be mostly used in your district.
It's going to mostly be used in my district?
On search and rescue. On search and rescue.
I don't know.
There's a lot of reasons in search and rescue to use it.
I understand that.
All right. We'll start, who would like to start?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills is a yes for drones. Supervisor Stop, Supervisor Callaway.
Jim?
Would you want me to speak more to the drone, perhaps?
Yeah, please.
We already have a drone, okay? We already have a drone. This one, the reason they're requesting it is it has night capabilities. The ones we have does not have night vision or heat or flare capabilities. So therefore, the drone, our drone program shuts down after hours.
So is...
The height?
Is that something we could, if it's mostly used in the upper highway four corridor, we could split the cost with Alpine County?
I mean, I could certainly reach out to the sheriff, but I don't know that, I've got to be honest with you, I don't know what he would say.
Rick?
I don't know what he would say.
Alpine County Sheriff.
Yeah, I don't know what he would say, and I wouldn't want to, we would, there could be issues if it's broken or misused or disappeared when we need it. And to be honest with you, it's going to be used all over the county. It's going to be used on a case-by-case basis, as you know.
Isn't this an AB 443 item?
If that's your recommendation, then we will listen to it.
Okay, we've got a, Maria, how do you want to go?
Yes.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I'm a yes. He didn't mention to Maria, too, that the current drone that they have only goes about 15 feet in elevation.
No, I need to clarify that. It goes much higher. That was the...
You can't see.
That was the level I showed you on that video where we used it. That was just the elevation I had it, we had it at for that particular event. It goes much higher.
Okay, all right.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yes.
Supervisor Stopper?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, too. I've got a drone. So we are a little under our contingency goal, but are there other items for the sheriff we want to take on at this time? Seeing none, I'm assuming we're all good. Supervisor Stopper, you? Yep. Thank you very much, Under Sheriff Macedo. Appreciate it.
So for a point of clarification, I understand the process and appreciate everything that was just done here. But in our discussions about the 100,000 for the coroner and the 200,000 for county council, those were to be placed in contingency if they need to come back. However, that doesn't exist now, so I just want to, and I fully understand the process. I just want to make clear that there's an understanding that that which we had talked about earlier with the actions taken now have unwound what I recommend as station was for those two reductions.
Well, we haven't been able to take out all the tax collectors office.
Oh, we haven't even got there yet. We can try.
We can't take it out there.
I guess, now, my thought is that this is just preliminary.
Preliminary, yes. That's right.
So I don't get all hooked up on this budget until the governor's final budget comes out. And so I, for me, I don't spend a lot of nickel diming on the, what you said I think is valid, and it's things that we should keep in mind. But to me, the real work for this board's going to come when we do the budget, the final, final budget versus the final budget. I mean, that's sort of been my philosophy.
And I agree with Maria. When we get to final budget, we'll have final numbers and we'll know exactly where we're at, and then we can go back. So...
And I understand I promoted that in my introductory presentation when I said we were very conservative and the reason why we took that approach. My ask, and I'll remind you at final as well, that we pay the contingency first before we consider ads, that we focus on the policies that have been approved and get, put that money back in place first as a priority, and then any other potential things that may come up in terms of requests at that point in time.
Okay. Thank you very much, Under Sheriff. Oscar, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations, you got one budget done.
But don't spend the money yet.
What was the previous guy's name that did this job?
We had Maria Henze, and prior to that, we had Mr. Brandon Cody.
Yeah, Mr. Brandon Cody, yes.
That's not by you.
No.
All right. Treasure Tax Collector.
Yeah.
Are there questions or changes to the CAO's recommended budget to the Treasure Tax Collector?
She said no, there is no.
No questions and no changes, not from you, from us.
I agree with the CAO's recommendation.
She got everything she wanted.
She did.
Probably the only one.
She got everything she asked for, maybe not wanted. She got her window, so...
Are there any questions for her?
No.
Is there any changes to her budget? Very well.
I want the glass back.
Tax collector?
Thank you.
Treasure Tax Collector? You're good.
Thank you.
Special Districts?
Forget my hat.
I've got questions.
Dennis?
Yeah. On page 460, we have CSA 2 bar 20. And on page 469, we have CSA 2 bar 20. Those kind of work together, so I really don't have a problem with that. But I'm missing the first page on CSA 4 Diamond 20.
Do you run?
I don't have a first page here for some reason.
You're breaking on the Treasure Tax Collector taking more than two minutes?
Well, I think the feed's a little behind, too.
If I could just, I figured out that, you know, it's, bar 20's split up between two different spots in the budget book, but I just need that first page for Diamond 20, and then we're good. Unless you can tell me where it is.
It's in the Treasure Tax Collector's...
That's where we're at.
Supervisor Mills, what page are you on?
If you look at the first page for CSA 2 is on page 460.
Okay.
The last page for CST 2 is on page 469. It's kind of split up between CSA 12 and everybody else.
Gotcha.
CSA 1. And, but when I get to CSA 4, I don't have the first page.
Okay.
If you want to just send it to me, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll be happy to follow up and send you a revised copy.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
Are there questions? Anybody want to adjust the CAO's recommended budget?
I've got something additionally to think about.
Just a second.
Last year...
Is this to do with the CAO, with the special districts?
No, sir.
Okay, so let me wrap it up.
Sorry, Dennis. Sorry.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I think, is this, is your point to the budget?
Yes, yes.
The money's in the CAO's budget.
My question would be, because this is all centered around these vacant positions, and there's a lot of vacant positions at like 10%. To the auditor, on the unfunded, total unfunded PERS in the budget, this current budget, these are, these are the total numbers that you've come up with roughly for unfunded liabilities.
This is the amount that Calpers told us we have to pay them regardless of what happens here at the county. So that's for the 1920 fiscal year. It's about 4.4, 4.1, I don't have it sitting in front of me.
Just a rough numbers, fine.
4.4. 4.4 across the entire budget and about 2.1-ish?
A little higher than that.
2.2 something, 2.4 is in the general fund. So, you know, kind of if you've listened to me over the last several years, I keep saying the PERS is just going to go up and up and up. So we are going to see probably within the next three years, that number is going to be close to six. So it's like 5.8.
So in other words, what we're looking at is, is that by 2023 roughly, we could be in the almost $6 million range with that number.
Yes, and it keeps going up from there.
But the reality is, is that even vacant positions are PERS-able.
So the unfunded liability is, it really stems from all of the classic positions. So if you think about the public employee pension reform act, PAPRA. When that went into play, a line got drawn. And so if you were hired prior to that day, you're considered a classic PERS member. If you were hired after that day, you're considered a PAPRA member. The whole premise with a PAPRA member is you, and this is the theory, it's not completely true, but we'll just say for, it's the theory. If you're a PAPRA member, you as the employer, you're paying for 50% of your costs, and the employer is going to pay for 50% of your costs. So the theory is going forward, there is no unfunded liability. On classic employees, that is not even remotely correct. What happened was classic employees, the employee would pay their seven, or, well, prior to PAPRA, the counties and the agencies would actually pay for 100% of all of the PERS costs. Then when PAPRA went into play, we legally couldn't do that. So the employee, if you're a non-safety member, would pay 7%, and you would never pay anything more than that. The employer would pay the rest of it. And if you were a safety member, the employee would potentially pay 9%, and the employer would pay for everything else. What has happened throughout the years is Calpers realized, well, gosh, we haven't actually generated enough money to pay for the benefits because these are defined benefits. So it's irrelevant how the market went, it's irrelevant how long you paid into the system, it's irrelevant that you lived until you were 107, and so did your spouse. It doesn't matter. The, you're going to get 2% at, you know, 55 or whatever the tier is in the calculation when you, when you fall under that classic criteria or PAPRA criteria. So PERS realized, you know, mainly in the recession, I think, is where it really hit, that they don't have sufficient assets to actually make those benefits whole. So that's where PAPRA came into play. So when it all first started happening, what the counties and cities and, you know, anyone who dealt with PERS, the actuary rates started going way up. So we used to have maybe like an 11% employer contribution. Well, then that went to 14, and then it went to up and up and up. Same thing with safety. Safety is much, much higher because their tier is, at the time, it was 3% at 50, which is a much different payout. So when, that kind of happened for a few years, and then PERS goes, well, shoot, even with these increased actuary rates, we're not generating enough assets to pay. So then they came up with this lump sum concept, which basically says, we don't care what you're paying your people anymore. We need to pay for this unfunded liability because the unfunded liabilities for us is like $70 million. So how do we pay 70 million when you're only paying, you know, maybe a million dollars, maybe, depending on how the market did in that particular year? You're never going to pay it off, right? It's like, it's like only paying interest on your mortgage and never paying the principal off. So what they went to is this unfunded liability lump sum payment that all agencies are having to pay. It started with the safety contract, and then it went to the miscellaneous contract. Now we're even finding that they are, they finally admitted there's actually an unfunded liability for PAPRA employees as well. So much smaller, but there is also an unfunded liability for PAPRA. But the biggest part is on the miscellaneous contract and on the safety contract. So until that gets paid off, you will have this very large lump sum payment that has to happen. But that was all premised on all these classic employees, many of which don't even work here anymore, many of which have been replaced by PAPRA members. So how do you pay for those positions? So we looked at this for 1920, and we said, what's the most equitable way in order to spread the costs? And every jurisdiction has tried to figure out what's an equitable way to cost this out. So what we decided to do was look at the total... So what we decided to do was look at the total approved positions that are on the books, and spread, and look at what their base wages would be for those respective positions, and then spread the costs on a prorated basis by those positions. If you have a bunch of vacant positions, we're still going to charge you for the vacant positions. Because you might fill them tomorrow, you might not fill them for a year, but the reality is, their portion of the unfunded liability existed, because you had that position filled at some point, could have been 10 years ago, it's kind of irrelevant at this point. All of that was a way for us to figure out how is the best way to allocate those costs. So now there's a shift, because what was on the, on the approved position list is going to be different for final budget likely. So what we'll have to do is look at that from a final budget perspective, probably do a true-up of the allocation of the lump sum allocation. So we're trying to incentivize departments that if you have vacant positions, and they've been vacant, and it's likely you're not going to fill those positions, you probably want to give them up. And pass those costs on to departments that actually have positions that they're going to fill.
Let me continue on that, because that's where I wanted to go, is that I would strongly recommend, where I, I look at the 16, 17, 17, 18, 18, 19 budgets, and all three of them are sitting with these 59 vacant positions that have been here year over year over year. Those positions at an all-in cost calculation of 87,500, it represents 5.162 million dollars in our budget. And then in essence, it's hidden money that's not being spent, it's just hidden within departments. So we're sitting here trying to work out a 1.6 million dollar differential, and we've got all of this sitting here. I know if you pull those out, we're going to have to recalculate the PERS unfunded, we're going to have to recalculate a lot of those other numbers. But the point is, is that that's, that is skewing our decision process.
And when it's, when it's in a non-general fund budget unit, it's not as catastrophic, I guess. When it's in the general fund, it really is encumbering monies that could be available for the board to make decisions other than what they're making. And that's kind of, that's, that's the problem.
So I want to just recommend strongly that we focus on the general fund departments first, and looking for those vacant positions that we just can't seem to fill, they're just sitting there drawing into our accounts, and in essence, like I said before, skewing our result. So I'm just asking the board and the CAO to really seriously look at that, and see if that can be one of the methods that we use to, in essence, true ourselves up. And it's going to get worse over the years, as we have more, or a greater burden on the unfunded liabilities that will skew us even more. So I'm just, I'm just asking for that to be a consideration before we get to final, so we can look at that in some way and get some understanding of it.
Supervisor Toffenali?
Yeah. Now, all those 59 positions aren't general fund.
No.
A number of them are.
No.
But as Marita knows, when recession hit, we did this before. We put, and the sheriff's office had what they call a parking lot.
I remember that.
Yeah, yeah. But we've done this before, and it may be time that we need to do this again, and go through and pick out the ones that have been vacant for many years, you just can't seem to, and not carry that in those budgets. Because we are looking for money, if you look up here at that point, I think if we can, even if there's 20 that are general fund, we can look out and come back maybe in July or September at the final budget, and clear those out, we may be in better shape than what we think.
Yeah.
So it's not something that's unprecedented, we have done this before.
And what you two will recall is, it was even worse back then, because not only did we have positions on the books that were funded and vacant, we had positions on the books that were unfunded.
Correct.
And so trying to, it was nearly impossible for HR and I to try to weed through, to figure out which ones are funded and which ones weren't, and which ones are going to generate a savings. And so to do that massive cleanup, as much as it hurt, and departments did not want to do it, we had to get out ahead of that. So at least now we have a pretty decent internal policy, that if you unfund a position, then that position is coming to the board as part of the budget to delete it. So I think for the most part, we're only going to be dealing with funded vacant positions, but they've been vacant year over year.
Supervisor Calloway?
So if, picking up on what Gary said, if we park in parking lot.
No parking lot. No parking lot.
Don't even start that.
Don't ever do that parking lot again, that was worse than just leaving it on.
Well, the reason we parking lot is because the process to establish a position was cumbersome.
We fixed all that. So we fixed that. So we have tried to make a much easier process with HR and administration and the board in order to streamline that process.
So if, at the end of, what I'm hearing you say, at the end of the budget year, because going way to Brent's time, if there were positions that were unfunded on the books, they had to be drawn. And that's what I'm hearing you say now.
That's what we're currently doing. So now what we're running into is there are positions on the books that are funded, but they're vacant. So what's happening is, there are dollars that are locked in all of these respective budgets, that no one else can touch, because they are tied to a position that's not going to be filled. That's where we're running into a problem now.
When you say not touched, you mean that we can't even use it for contingency, we can't use it for anything?
No. Because you've appropriated the dollars.
It's been appropriated, that's correct.
I really want a serious look at that, and try to unwind that, and get some reality to what that is, because of what it has caused us in our contingency problems over the last two, three years that I've been here. So, I want, is there any other discussion?
I wanted to add one. So, two points with that. The first would be, just thinking out loud, I'm not sure if the right time to do it is final.
Probably not.
But in next year's budget. And the reason is, is because there are some budget managers that have vacant positions that programmed in salary savings, and that's in open GOV. So it's accounted for in some ways, not all of them, but we're half in and we're half out. So the new budget year, especially with the learning we've had going through this process, would be, I think, the most appropriate place to start it as a standard, that if it's open for a certain period of time, or if you recruited for it for a certain period of time, or you're not trying to recruit for it, it's out. And that has to come back then through a budget request process if they want to continue to have the position, but we pull them out automatically. That's my first comment. The second piece would be, I know it's most important in the general fund, but we have a living concept here of department heads, and I don't want to attribute it to any one particular department head, but the idea that, well, we're on an island. Well, we're not. No department in the county is on an island regardless of how they're funded. So they need to follow purchasing and procurement policies, personnel policies, budget development policies. So if we start pulling out particular departments and having specialized rules, then it creates competition amongst the departments, and some animosity that I think as long as we develop thoughtful, rational budget development requirements that apply to all departments, then that makes sense. And we don't run into issues here where one particular department says, yeah, but I have all this other money over here, so, you know, I'm part general fund, so I'll just cover all this stuff over here. We just have the same rules for every department head and budget development.
Thank you.
And we give you a true picture next year coming in of what that really looks like. And they can make the request through this hearing process if they have a good justification.
Okay.
And to that degree, one of the phrases that I hear over the years, and it makes the hair stand on the back of my neck, stand up, is when someone will bring something forward to the board, and they'll say, but there's no general fund impact. Like, that's the blessing. And, and I will say, and that drives me insane, for a multitude of reasons. But what I will say is, anytime, and it doesn't matter if you, if you as a board add a position in Health and Human Services, which is non-general fund, or Public Works, which is non-general fund, or UGB classes, or equity adjustments in non-general fund, and it says, no impact to general fund.
It does.
It does. It absolutely impacts the general fund, because it adds to the unfunded liability of our pension, it adds to the overall insurance, and it's not a one-for-one. So it's not like it's only, costs are only going to be spread to that respective non-general fund department. It contributes to the overall picture, which then ultimately goes back to the general fund. So there is always a cost to the general fund, no matter what you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
That was a great conversation.
Thank you.
Really important. I want to, should we wrap up the budget? Did you have another question?
I got one more that I'd like to poll the board on, because last year, Rebecca, you were involved, and I was involved, I don't remember who else, was in establishing PARs.
Yes.
And that's an investment pool that is available to us to offset PERS.
That was the IRS 115 Fund.
Right.
And the board had given direction to, they had approved it, they had given direction to the administrative office to go ahead and engage with PARs. That was the selection, after we did the selection process, and then they gave direction to go ahead and sign the contract. The piece that was missing was appropriating funds in order to go into PARs. There is a fund that's sitting idle, earning pooled treasury interest, which is not as good as what we could earn if we moved the money over to PARs. And so my recommendation at the time was to take the money out of that fund and use that as the seed money to go to the IRS 115 PARs trust.
And I'm asking to poll the board to do exactly that, and to make that happen. I am one who is not in PERS, I'm in PARs, and I just see this as a vehicle that we have, we built it, we have it here, let's use it. So I'm asking the board to approve moving that.
I don't know. I don't, how much money are we talking about?
It's 1 point.
If you're talking about 27th payroll, 1.5 approximately.
1.5 million.
27th payroll?
Yeah.
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 It's the, it's the, it's the 27th payroll slash PERS smoothing fund. So money was put aside for two purposes. One was to pay for the 27th payroll that happens every once in a while, and we just had one last fiscal year, fiscal year before that? I don't know, we had one a little while ago. And then the second reason is, there was a year that we actually had more cash carry than what we, what the administration had anticipated, so they took a chunk of that cash carry, and they pushed it into that 27th payroll PERS smoothing fund. And that was to offset the imminent increases of PERS. So that was the whole premise of it, which is exactly what we're talking about today. The, the thing to understand is, just because you put it into the PARs trust, the IRS 115 Fund, it doesn't mean that's it, we can never look at it again, it just has to sit there, and it can only be used to pay for our future pension costs. We could use it, so if we said, oof, we're having an issue, you know, in 2021, and we just need a stopgap, we could theoretically go ahead and release a portion of those funds to PERS in order to offset that. So it's not, it's still our money, but it's in trust. And, and what kind of breaks my heart is, it's sitting in our pooled treasury, which our treasurer does a wonderful job at doing the investments, and we always earn positive interest. However, we could make more interest if it was outside of our treasury.
What is the total again? I'm sorry.
1.5-ish.
You know, I'm not against this, I'm sorry, I'm not against this at all. I would, I would like to see, because it's transfer, we are in budget, I understand we can do a lot of things right now, but I would, I would like to see it.
I.
What the total is, but.
I agree.
I don't see, I don't have any objection to it.
I'd rather bring, let the CAO and the auditor bring it back to us in a format that's a little more holistic than this.
You were asking for a poll.
To do that, to get this motion going, because it's part of budget, so that you folks can understand, you know, the 1 point, what is it, 1.87 in life right now?
Dennis, you want that final budget, or are you making a motion to move that money now?
No, in final budget.
Okay.
That we, so we get it together, so that they can have that ability to do that. Right now, it's sitting in a very low-interest account, and PARs is substantially better. It's, it's almost lunacy to have it sitting the way it's sitting right now, knowing the vehicle we have, just waiting to park it.
So we got a poll before the board?
It would be better to bring it back at final budget than it would be a separate item.
Right, that's what I'm asking for.
Because you would need a four-fifth vote.
Okay, so the poll is bring it back to final budget. Supervisor Toffenali?
Yeah.
Supervisor Toffenali?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Calloway?
Okay. So we'll prepare something for the September budget hearings, correct?
That's a question.
As part of the September budget hearings for that?
Well, when we bring it back, if we could have any.
I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not adverse to all that, but just to bring it back at budget, I'd rather we just had maybe an agenda discussion on it. So when it comes back, we'd be prepared to act, if that's what we choose to do, versus making it a topic of the budget, so.
So, so the only caveat is, the board already took an action on the entire thing, the whole thing. The only thing the board did not take an action on is the appropriation of the money in order to move it. It was a loose discussion, and I'm, and I am fine, because I don't, I don't think you were on the board when it came, when PARs came. And so what I would say is, my preference would be not to have it be its own separate board item. My preference would be to have.
For me to come in and talk to you and then?
No, but we could have a discussion as part of the budget hearing, and we can include that information as part of your staff packet related to the budget.
Okay.
As opposed to a whole other item.
She wasn't.
Talk to you since.
She wasn't on the board when it came.
She wasn't on the board.
It was 2017.
Yeah. But there's, that's the only action, there's really no other action. So I, but I can gather all that information for you.
I'll come talk to you while I'm at the side.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thank you for all your work with the CAO, and I want to thank everybody who worked on this budget and put it together on behalf of the board. I think we owe you a round of applause.
Give them all kudos.
Thank you very much. Everybody.
Yeah, kudos.
Okay. That wraps up that item, announcements. I'm sorry. Supervisor Calloway?
Just to get back to the capital improvements.
Yes, we're going to work on it.
Did you, did we approve that 30,000?
We did.
Or can I get it back?
You can't get it.
You can't have it.
Hold on. You could fight for it, but.
Okay, that's fine.
Hold on. Supervisor Toffenali has an idea, before we wrap up the budget.
Well, we have this, this sheet that was passed out to us, I don't think we did anything with.
Yeah, we did a long one.
Were we supposed to go through this and?
No, those are all in the.
Those are all, okay. That was my question.
All right? Good deal, then we will, Supervisor Toffenali, you good?
Good.
All right, we'll wrap up that item. Next item.
Supervisor announcements. In compliance with AB 1234, chaptered as Government Code Section 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement, such as mileage, meals, lodging, et cetera, but may also, at the board member's discretion, include any other meeting attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
We'd like to begin.
I'll get it over with. Saturday, the first, attended the wildfire discussion with CalFire at Altaville. Monday, the third, CMC AAs meeting, that's where we selected Stacy Johnston to be the new executive director, and also PGNI at Frogtown. And Wednesday, the fifth, it was COG meeting here. Six, Thursday, at RCD meeting here. Eight, Saturday, Copper's homecoming, and Monday, the 10th, CSA 2 in Angels Camp.
Supervisor Toffenali?
I was in attendance at the COG meeting, and I missed the Mountain Valley MS meeting, JPA meeting this morning to be here, so that's my announcement.
Supervisor Calloway?
Nothing to report.
I have one item to report. I did go down and meet with the state director BLM on May 30. I went down, and I appreciated the work the staff did, I felt well-prepared. I met with their legislative director, their field, their regional director, I mean, their field office director. We talked about the buke fire trees and the work that we did as a county to ameliorate that risk. They said they would send me a formal letter, but I believe the answer for reimbursement is no. We also spoke to the national, to the director of BLM in Washington DC. We had hopes. We had hopes. That said, they are very pleased with the work that we've got going on in Calaveras County. It is not perfect, but we are far ahead of other areas in our region. I'm trying, I suggested that the state director come and do a tour of the work and I've gone up and looked at some of the work that we're doing. It's very impressive. It is our hope that because we are doing so well, if we could become a poster child for how communities can work with BLM to clear up the mess of their forests, we could move things forward. So perhaps in the long run, things will even out for our initial investment, but it was something important. I know my community thanks this board for supporting it and I thank this board for supporting it. I hope that we're able to come up with a partnership with BLM. I've decided that the carrot and working with them is better than kicking them, since kicking certainly got us nowhere before. So it was a positive meeting and I will keep you guys informed that when, and if the state director comes up, perhaps we could all join on the tour of the projects that are going on.
To that point, the Resource Conservation District members met with Matt Reed with Congressman McClintock's office yesterday for the purpose of discussing how to begin to take some local control over BLM lands that are landlocked and along roadways here in our county. And that conversation will move forward. They're setting up a meeting with BLM as well. So we should keep each other posted on what, what's going on with that as well.
Absolutely. I didn't, I didn't get the feeling there was a lot of appetite at the state level, but this is kind of a big federal issue.
It's a federal issue.
And we'll, we'll be nice to all sides.
And the RCD has a unique place because they're federally funded, that they might be able to take some of the local control over these, these parcels. So more to come on that and we'll just keep everybody informed.
And if you guys ever want to go see some really cool projects that are going on and thinning out some of that BLM land, I'd happy to take you up to Railroad Flat right by the cemetery there on Independence. You buy lunch? Sure, I'll buy you lunch at Railroad Flat. Very well, then we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much. Oh, wait.
Thank you.
Staff reports?
Oh, sorry.
Staff reports.
Staff reports. Thank you. CEO, do you have anything to add?
Not at this hour, no. Thank you for all the engagement in the budget process and I appreciate you tolerating six weeks on the job and trying to weed through all of this, so.
Madam Counselor? Madam Clerk?
I have a question. Don't you allow public comment on the.
We had public comment at the beginning.
Yeah, but you shut me up and told me I couldn't comment until IHSS.
You know what? I'm going to make a, I'm going to make.
Exception.
An exception. Bonnie, you have your three minutes.
Thank you.
We want to go out on a positive note today.
I hope you guys find some extra money somewhere. The IHSS funding formula consists of a dollar of county money, $2 of state money and $3 of federal money. The IHSS employees have not negotiated a contract since 2007. The county has not supplied any additional funding for this program since 2009. We need $200,000 of general fund contingencies or teeter money to provide an overdue, well-deserved raise for 330 home care workers in Calaveras County. That's why I feel that you need to find a few bucks here and there and I was real hopeful that somehow it would be addressed some point. And I don't think it was in the HS Health and Human Services budget. I think I'm the only person you're going to ever hear talking about this. We don't have a union that's worth anything. They have not stepped forward in 10 years to ask for a pay raise for these workers that have been neglected, ignored and disrespected. $200,000 of county money would generate a million dollars in state and federal funding. That would give the home care workers $2 above minimum wage, which we earned in 2009. But because of the neglect that our union has given us, we've not been able to progress and get any increase in wages, any changes in benefits or any respect. So I'd just like to remind you all that you've been allowed additional monies over the years from the community first choice option monies that was intended to give home care workers a raise, but the county chose to spend it on whatever you chose to spend it in the general Thank you for your time. Don't forget the 330 home care workers that you may need someday. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bonnie, and thank you for your patience over these two days. Appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, we stand adjourned. We stand adjourned.